Councilmember Gibbons, could you repeat what you said?
The camera at the podium is goofy.
Councilmember Gibbons, are you able to hear us?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. The city of Campbell is no longer requiring face coverings be worn inside our city facilities. However, all are welcome to wear a face covering should that make you feel more comfortable. Should health directives from the county of Santa Clara or the Centers for Disease Control change, the city will comply. So I will call to order this regular meeting of the City of Campbell City Council on Tuesday, July 5th, 2022. This regular city council meeting is conducted in person and via telecommunication and is compliant with provisions of the Brown Act. The city council meeting is live streamed on Channel 26, the city's website, and on YouTube. Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Gibbons?
Here.
Councilmember Lopez?
Here.
Councilwoman Landry?
Present.
Vice Mayor Bybee?
Present.
Mayor Rosnikoff?
Here, thank you. I'll note that Councilmember Gibbons is remote and on our Zoom feed. We're going to ask you to join us in the pledge and I'm going to invite the Recreation Community Services staff that is here up to lead the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd like to, all come forward and you'll lead us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Hang around there for a second, please. So the Pledge of Allegiance was led by the Recreation Community Services Supervisor Staff. And I'm going to introduce everybody. There's Natasha Bissell, Recreation Community Services Director, Lauren Merriman, Recreation Services Manager, Lauren Council, Recreation Supervisor, Tina Wong-Earling, Recreation Supervisor, Erin Bueno, Recreation Supervisor, Carrie Perkins, Museum Supervisor, Kurt Brown, Utility Worker, and Gathry Valissa Ramainian, Nutrition Site Manager. How do you do?
Thank you.
Thank you. So we're recognizing recreation supervisors tonight in celebration of Parks Make Life Better Month in the City of Campbell. So I want to, I'd ask everybody to join me and congratulate your hardworking, dedicated recreation supervisor staff. And we're going to have a proclamation. I will give you a certificate and appreciation for leading the pledge, but we'll move into our proclamation in a minute anyway. But I want to thank you and congratulate everybody for all the work you're doing. So thank you for being here. So we're going to move to special presentations and proclamations. And that proclamation is declaring July 2022 as Parks Make Life Better Month. Read you a little background here. Since 1985, the U.S. House of Representatives designates the month of July as National Parks and Recreation Month as an effort to bring awareness to the importance of parks and recreation programs throughout the state with their Parks Make Life Better campaign. And the City of Campbell Recreation Community Services Department offers a variety of programs and services, both in person and online, that promote physical, emotional, and mental health and wellness. Recreation programs bring diverse populations together, fostering social cohesiveness and strengthen our community with facilities that reflect community character, heritage, culture, and history. The Recreation Community Services Department helps spread the Parks Make Life Better message to inform citizens of the many benefits of utilizing parks, facilities, recreation programs, and services. And I hereby proclaim the month of July 2022 as Parks Make Life Better Month in the City of Campbell. So let me just add here something here because certainly in the last two years, no department has probably taken a bigger hit during COVID because overnight you had programs just disappear. And unfortunately, a lot of those temporary positions that don't exist when you don't have sports and you don't have some senior programs or you don't have a museum and you don't have a theater, you got hit very hard. And, but you kept everything going that you could and appreciated. And within two years, you're clearly the department that took the biggest hit and you're also the department, I think, that came back the quickest and the strongest since then. So thank you so much for that because I think my interaction is with the director, obviously. But the attitude was, we have to do what we have to do and we have to survive and be prepared to come back and do that. And so many, so many programs were kept open and pleased people because they had very few places they could go other than parks and maybe to the track and stuff like that. So personally, I just want to thank you because I don't, I just don't think we had any group of people that had to respond so quickly and so dramatically to the COVID challenges and then who came back so strongly. So I appreciate that. So personally, I appreciate that very much. So thank you for that. Councilwoman Landry?
Yeah, I just want to really thank you guys. Parks make us beautiful. Parks serve our community plus other people. And the fact that you guys did serve all through COVID and everybody in parks, there was a lot of people that got let go, but we were building back up. And so I just want to really thank you guys for all your hard work and dedication to our city.
Councilmember Lopez?
Yeah, totally second everything that's been said. And, and just to expand, it wasn't like things went away during COVID and now they're back. The Parks Department did it, I think, really creative and nimble work and heroic in terms of, you know, what the needs of the community were. But in terms of new programs, you know, how can we go virtual with some things? What can we try out? And it's not every department, it's not every organization, I'm not, you know, not even just thinking broadly in terms of what we're seeing the past few years that has the flexibility to operate that way. So really appreciate the work that was done and the really quality output and ways of serving the community during that time, too. And very glad, as others have said, to now see things coming back even more.
Councilmember Gibbons?
Thank you. I obviously agree with what's been said. The dynamic group there that I can only partially see.
You speak a little louder. We're barely hearing you.
All right. There, is that any better?
Yes.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, everything's been said. I totally agree with compliments and recognition of the hard work. But I'd like to acknowledge also that our Park and Recreation Department, or Recreation and Parks Department, is one of the core community benefits for our residents. It's one of the core things that makes Campbell Campbell. And obviously, it's the people that make those programs happen and the relationship with the community members that makes them so successful and really, as we all like to say, makes Campbell Campbell. So thank you for what you've accomplished and managed through the pandemic, but also for the value that you bring to all of our community members all the time. So thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Bybee?
I also want to thank you and echo most of the comments here, not all of them. And I want to say thank you for the pride that you take in your jobs and the dedication to the city. And it shows in the quality and the wide variety of classes and programs that you offer. And you're a great staff and we're lucky to have you.
Thank you. And I'll echo everything you said. I'd like to come down and present you with the president. Normally, yeah, I will have you speak. Normally, when I see a crowd, I'd be afraid to come down there. But, but Erin's here. Erin and I go back more than 12 years to Parks and Rec Commission.
Yes.
So I'll trust him to watch my back, please.
I just really want to acknowledge the team that I work with. And it's, I'm very proud and honored to work with the individuals standing behind me. This represents more than half of our team. And they were here almost every day through COVID working and being very creative in how they can deliver programs and services because we all truly believe in Parks Make Life Better and that Parks is just kind of the synonym that's used to represent everything that we offer, whether it's a museum or it's an activity or it's a service provided to somebody in our community. And this is an outstanding group of individuals behind me and I couldn't have done it without them. We are truly a team and I'm very proud of the work we've done. And then also thanks to Public Works and the Parks Department and the maintenance team that makes our parks so beautiful, as well as the building maintenance team who maintains our facilities. We obviously couldn't do anything without them either. So to include them as well in this month is much appreciated.
Thank you. That's it. Thank you for doing, for leading the pledge. Here is the proclamation. Appreciate everybody, but thank you so much.
Can I make a brief?
Sure.
I misspoke during my comments and just wanted to be clear. I said departments when I meant organizations, just to speak broadly. So there's no comparison meant between any other department. But do you want to, just want to be clear that that was a misstatement.
Yeah, we love you too, Todd. That's, that's, let me translate that. Thank you. Todd's happy. So thank you so much. There are no communications, petitions, there's nothing to report out from executive session. We'll move to oral requests. Madam Clerk, do we have any comments for, or any requests for oral request comments?
We do not.
Okay. None in, none in house and none on Zoom?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. So we'll move to mayor announcements. City Hall is open to the public for in-person services Monday through Friday from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. for your convenience. Online services such as permits, business license applications, and virtual appointments are available online. Visit the city's website at campbellca.gov to view information for all city departments and available services. We have a municipal election coming up on November 8th, 2022 for voters living in districts three, four, and five. The candidate nomination period opens on July 18th, 2022 and continues through August 12th, 2022. For more information, please contact the city clerk's office at 408-866-2117 or clerk's office at campbellca.gov. The city clerk's office is accepting applications for the Planning Commission, Civic Improvement Commission, and Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee through July 22nd. To find out more about these positions or to apply, please contact the city clerk's office at 408-866-2117 or visit the city's website again at campbellca.gov. The summer concert season is upon us. Spend your summer evening with us and enjoy free live music here at Orchard City Green during our annual summer concert series every Thursday through July 14th. RPM Band, a New Jersey-based trio that performs mostly classic rock and blues from the 60s, 70s, and 80s, will perform this Thursday, July 7th. Enjoy movie nights under the stars for some free family fun. Encanto will be featured on Friday, July 22nd at 8:00 p.m. at John D. Morgan Park on the Pony Baseball Field. Contact the Recreation Department at 408-866-2104 for more information. And finally, enjoy an afternoon experiencing live local wines, beers, cuisine, and live music. The Campbell Community Emergency Response Team, or CERT, is hosting their fourth annual Taste of Campbell fundraiser on Saturday, July 30th, from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. at the Campbell Community Center. Tickets are available at campbellcert.org/taste. Proceeds from this event help pay for emergency supplies, equipment, and training in support of our community. From here, we'll move to the consent calendar, which is items two through 11. I have a request to remove item 11. Is there any other request to remove any items from staff or council or public? Seeing none, so is there a motion for items two?
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent calendar, items two.
I'll second that.
Motion by Vice Mayor Bybee, second by Councilwoman Landry. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Gibbons?
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Councilwoman Landry?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bybee?
Aye.
Mayor Rosnikoff?
Aye. Item 11, I had a request from Councilmember Gibbons. Would you like to take that?
And I apologize, my connection is a little weak, so I may go on and off video to strengthen that. I asked for item number 11 to be pulled because it's unusual to have such a diverse list of projects incorporated into one grant application. And one of the projects is something that has not come before council before in a formal way. It's been discussed but not come forward as a proposal and a written description. And there is a change in the description from the previous discussion related to the general plan. So beginning with item number one, and I spent some time talking with the city manager about this, for items numbers one, actually one and two, we've spoken that complete streets has changed substantively the requirements and benefit to the community for what's really involved in pedestrian, bicycle, and vehicular, sharing the road, as the story goes, where it's sharing the right of way. And the City of Campbell does not have a And the city of Campbell does not have a policy about complete streets. So the thought was that while these applications are going through their lengthy approval process, it might be an appropriate time for staff to come forward with recommendations on a policy about complete streets. And that may come out of the general plan update process. We didn't know. But the fact that we're doing so much street work and restriping and so forth, as I mentioned last time. Los Gatos has done some really incredible work on Winchester Boulevard, which we have not done, and now we're doing Hamilton. So it seemed like an appropriate time to bring that issue forward. And the item number three is the Hamilton Ave Precise Plan Project in previous discussions, and it is included in this first sentence as a specific plan. Staff has changed the language to use the term precise plan project. And I don't know if staff wishes to explain, but there is a different legal definition of a specific plan. And staff has reviewed that and has chosen to rename this scope of work a precise plan. Just for everybody's awareness. And council hasn't discussed this. So I just wanted to make sure that we had a public discussion about what a precise plan in the area of Hamilton and Salmar would mean. So that's my question, comment there. Sorry, I'm losing my voice. If anyone else, oh, and then I did have to staff question, which is if these projects come through, can they be approved individually, or do all three have to be approved? How does that break out?
Director Caperson?
Thank you for that. We may have to get community developments help at some point to distinguish between the specific and the precise plan. But regarding the three separate projects that are in here, the authorization is one single council report. So we're asking you that as a group of projects so that you'd have the context of what the grant requirements are. But the this will go in as three separate grant applications because they will actually draw on a variety of funds through MTC, which will be kind of funnel through VTA. There's a little bit of of alphabet soup here in the paragraph for each one for the type of funds that they would be drawing on, but you can rest assured that they would all go into the competition, so to speak, as three separate projects, although they might compete for separate pots of money within that within that call for applications.
Thank you. That helps. And let me try to say. The thought just went out of my head, but had to do with the three separate project. Oh, yes. I just wanted also mention to council because we discussed this at the time of the budget that staff submits these grant applications. And if we get and receive the grant application, it means that we're supportive of going forward with the projects. We have had problems in the past where a grant application came forward, and then staff felt obliged to have council support the project, even though there was some reservations about going forward with it. So I just wanted to reference the fact at the budget time, we specifically talked about grant applications and how going forward with them implies the council's consent to going forward with the actual projects.
Okay, any other comments? I'm making sure you're you're done. I can't remotely. It's just tougher. I don't. There's no light to watch for, so.
Okay. And so my final comment is I do not support the PDA project, which I haven't consistently supported. Other than that, I'm supportive of the Hamilton Avenue Street Resurfacing Project, hopefully with a policy in place by the time that grant money comes forward. And I am supportive of the Hamilton Ave Precise Plan as opposed to a specific plan.
Okay, thank you. Are there other comments from the council or a motion? Councilwoman Landry? You looked up.
Looking for everybody known.
You made eye contact. That's the bad thing.
I make a motion that the city council adopt a resolution authorizing the Public Works Director to submit one Bay Area grant program applications for the fiscal year 2223 annual street maintenance projects to resurface Hamilton Avenue, the Campbell Priority Development Area Enhancement Project, and the Campbell Avenue Precise Plan.
I'll second, but I have a question before we vote.
Okay, so motion by Councilwoman Landry, second by Councilmember Lopez for discussion.
Can we get the clarification on the precise versus specific?
Happy to. Robbie Stewart, Community Development Director. There's a video adjustment needed here, or I need to get lower one way or another. So initially, the general plan had identified a specific plan for this area. Staffs looked a bit closer at it. In state law, there's very prescriptive requirements for specific plans. Recent history, a lot of cities and community development departments have pivoted a bit, given those specific requirements to precise plans, area plans, or even transit area plans. So I believe that gives Campbell a bit more flexibility. We don't have to use a very prescriptive approach. So our advice is to use a precise plan in this case.
Sure that you got your answer. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Gibbons?
If I may do this, I vote in support of items one and three, not item two.
Councilmember Lopez?
I.
Councilwoman Landry?
I.
Vice Mayor Bybee?
I.
Mayor Resnickoff?
I. Thank you very much. So we move to public hearings at introductions of ordinances. Item 12 was a public hearing to consider lighting and landscaping district fiscal year 2022, 2023, confirming assessments. And if you will bear with me, I have a statement to read with regard to that item. This is the time and place set for hearing public comments on the Engineers' Report for the City of Campbell's Lighting and Landscaping Assessment District and on the Levian Collection of the Proposed Assessment for Fiscal Year 22, 2022 to 23. These proceedings are conducted pursuant to the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972. The Engineers' Report, prepared by the City Engineer, consists of the boundaries of the assessment district, the proposed improvements and or maintenance and operation of the district, the estimate of cost of those improvements and or maintenance, and the proposed assessments upon those lots and parcels of land within the proposed district. Any one of these items may be the subject of protests or endorsements. Should anyone wish to speak on these items, you are asked to clearly identify yourself and the property owned by you so that your statement may be correctly recorded. The hearing is declared open, and I will ask the city clerk to report on the various notices given in connection with the hearing, and also ask the city clerk to report on the written protests that have been received, if any. Following the city clerk's reports, the city engineer is asked to provide a statement regarding the nature of the lighting and landscaping district, which will be followed by any public testimony or comment. Madam Clerk?
Notices have been published as required by the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972 and Section 54954.6 of the California Government Code. Affidavits and certificates of publishing are on file in my office. A copy of the Engineers' Report, prepared by the City Engineer, was filed in my office on June 2, 2022, and has been open to public inspection since that time. No protests have been received by the city.
Okay, and our city engineer? Welcome, Roger. Yeah, is the mic on?
Thank you. The City of Campbell Lighting and Landscaping District is established annually to support the maintenance and operation of the city's parks, landscaping, public lighting, traffic signal systems, curbs, gutters, and sidewalks. Assessments proposed for fiscal year 2022-2023 are, as shown in the Engineers' Report, in total approximately $1.2 million. The proposed fiscal year 2022, 2023 assessments are at the same rate as last fiscal year 2021, 2022. No increases in the rate are being proposed. Thank you.
Thank you, Roger. The microphone is now available for public testimony. Should anyone wish to speak, you are asked to clearly identify yourself and the property owned by you so that your statement may be correctly recorded. Do we have any public comments?
We have no public comments in person or online.
Okay, so then I'll close the public hearing, and we'll bring this back to council for discussion and or a motion. Any? No comments? Is there a motion?
If I may, I'll move that the city council adopt a resolution overruling protest approving the Engineers' Report ordering the improvements and confirming the diagram and assessments.
Second?
Second.
Okay, so motion by Vice Mayor Bybee, second by Councilwoman Landry. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Gibbons?
I.
Councilmember Lopez?
I.
Councilwoman Landry?
I.
Vice Mayor Bybee?
I.
Mayor Resnickoff?
I. Thank you very much. So that passes. We go to item 13. Item 13 is a public hearing and introduction of ordinance to consider a city-initiated text amendment to the Campbell Municipal Code to add Chapter 11.15, parklets in the public right of way, adoption of a resolution approving an associated semi-permanent parklet program guide, adoption of a resolution approving an amendment to the city's master fee schedule to add fees and deposits related to parklets in the public right of way, and authorization of a one-time construction grant to program applicants and approval of associated budget adjustments for fiscal year 2023, and adopt a resolution approving an extension of the current temporary parklet program file number PLN 2022-39. Our presenter is?
Robbie Stewart, Community Development Director. Okay, we have a presentation. Let me see if I can load it up. Great. Sorry for the delay. Thank you, Ryan. Okay, very happy to be back here this evening. This should be a new item for the council. I have a short presentation with me tonight. Have some staff in support. Have Roger Start still here, our senior civil engineer, Stephen Rose, senior planner, Michael Thomas, economic specialist, all here to support this item. Purpose tonight is to adopt the semi-permanent parklet program, include standards and permitting procedures. We have been twice before you. Remember, in January, you authorized staff to go forward and develop a semi-permanent parklet program. In April, we brought you the initial outlines of the program. You provided policy feedback on those initial outlines. We do believe tonight, the program that's before you responds to council feedback. There were a few outstanding questions through stakeholder engagement. And again, through the feedback you provided earlier, we we believe the program before you has responded to that. If adopted tonight, the program would launch in September, specifically early to mid-September. We do plan on coming back in August. As a related item, we have issued under contract a design consultant to prepare the three semi-permanent parklet program designs. We anticipate those designs will be ready, and we'd like to bring them for your review in August before the program starts. Some guiding principles. So we've done a ton of research on parklets. One advantage of Campbell, we're not the first city out the gate. And so it's we've learned a bit from other jurisdictions, have studied a lot jurisdictions such as San Francisco, Berkeley, and had very, very lengthy discussions with the town of Los Gatos next door, which is a bit ahead of us, and put a lot more investment in their program. Coming from that and talking to the stakeholders, those who are involved in some of the parklet programs, we did come up with three guiding principles that really we believe are keys to success of this program because there have been programs that have stumbled both on the permitting, construction process. And we just put them in as as things to remember that guide what we believe is a successful program. So one is to simplify that permitting process and keep uniformed design standards. That's what's in this program. Number two, and this we've learned from the town of Los Gatos, the more experts, contractors, design professionals you bring in to the permitting process, the more chaotic it can get. And so we've tried to enter protocols and procedures here that limit that just to streamline the process. And then finally, there's a part of this process where these final designs will have to be customized for each individual space. And as you know, each parking space has different nuances with grades and inlets. And we've been advised, pay really close attention to that process. And so we've tried to put some parameters into this program to address that. Again, a lot of this has been learned from other jurisdictions and talking to a lot of our stakeholders. Council had directed staff to do more stakeholder engagement in April. We did an online questionnaire. And those results are in your packet. In general, our stakeholders, restaurant owners are expected and interested in to apply for semi-permanent parklets. Some have concerns on the cost and how much you'll talk, how long it will take to get a return on investment. But we've had generally very, very favorable feedback from our stakeholders. We had a June 6 stakeholder meeting here in the council chambers and explained the program and got feedback. And then again, we've had some pretty extensive discussions with our neighboring city on just lessons learned on their program. Outlines of the program, the generally, this is the downtown area of Los of Campbell. And that's the the map you see on the screen, which the the parklet program will be active. You've seen a lot of these parameters before. Up as remind council, the limitations of the program would allow two parking stalls per applicant or storefront width, whichever is smaller. We are recommending a cap of 32 spaces. Again, based on the number of existing parklets and expected applicants, we don't think there'll be more demand than supply with that cap. For eligibility, these are all bona fide eating establishments, which is all restaurants in the downtown area. We are including in the program to have the property owner sign the application and actually own the 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 security deposit because with the parklet. Oftentimes, you'll have a restaurant that will come and use the parket. They might go bankrupt, they might move out, but having the the property owner sign on the application, own the security deposit allows them to keep that parklet versus having to convert it and then having to build a new one later. We have put selection criteria into the program. If for some reason there's more demand than supply, we have criteria we've used to select the applicants. There will be a waitlist. If those aren't selected, might have to wait for a parklet to come back. We are advising council, one year after the parklets are constructed, to report back on the status of the program, how it's doing. You may advise to do a phase two at that point. We would just see, check in with you on how the program is going. And if there's still people asking for parklets, a consideration if the program should be revised and expanded in any way. Some more parameters. Again, on the security deposit, we would allow a parklet to remain at least 180 days. And but it would have to be removed after that if someone did not apply for an extension. For fees and subsidy, this was a point of discussion at the April meeting. The parklet fee we've proposed is a subsidized fee. The full cost recovery would be about $1,000 higher. But we are proposing a flat fee of $1,500. And also the refundable security deposit of $3,000. It is typical for most of these programs to have an annual verification fee, and that's included of $600. A final fee you haven't seen, and we are discussing this with the parklet design architect we've hired, is that final customization. So again, once an applicant applies, picks a design, there'll have to be a process where that that design is customized to the space. We think the most expedient way to do that is to have the architect who's hired by the city do that customization. It would probably cost a lot less than a third-party architect. They're estimating that could cost up to $3,000. Again, we're working with our architect to see how how much customization can be included in the base fee that they have given Campbell to prepare all the parklets. So that fee probably will vary a little bit, but it could be up to $3,000 more for the applicant to pay for. Finally, we've proposed a one-time construction grant. This was discussed before on using ARPA funds to support the businesses of $3,000. One thing I missed, there was discussion before before council. One thing I missed, there was discussion before before council of different ways of providing a subsidy. And as you see, we're asking applicants to pay for certain things, a review cost, an application fee, a security deposit. And at the same time, we're giving them a grant. Someone might think, well, that's just money circling both ways. How does that make any sense? When we thought about this, and one guidance you had given to us is to make sure that parklet owners, operators have skin in the game. And so designing this, as you see on the screen, that the the actual applicant owners would pay a fee to apply. Because there is a barrier to entry. If it was free, we might have those that applied and aren't really serious about a parklet. And also because the security deposit is really key to removing that parklet at some point. If the city was subsidizing that fee, there's a little less ownership of an applicant actually to go in and remove it at some point. So there might be an instance where the money given out from the city could could circle back in some way. But we think it's designed in a way to make sure our applicants do have that skin in the game where they own the security deposit and the fees. And at the same time, we are giving them a small subsidy they can use in any way they wish, that they wish. That's the the purpose of the the proposal on the screen. A couple more parameters. Again, we do have the consultant or contract, three design options that they are preparing. We do anticipate coming back to you in August at the latest September to have those reviewed before council. Construction streamline, this is something we've thought about a lot. Some of the advice from Los Gatos is the more wide open the pool is for contractors to apply, there's a great variety of experience and permitting difficulties that that Campbell could run into in dealing with different contractors. To narrow that pool, we are recommending that the city use objective standards, that contractors would have to meet certain standards to be able to build parklets. And three of those standards would be, one, you're licensed and bonded contractor. Two, you actually have experience building at least one parklet. So you know what you're getting into. You're not a a window designer or someone who hasn't done parklets. And three, we we would like to have a webinar or something that explains the design procedures. They get familiar with it. They can understand the designs that are being proposed and that they'll use before they're actually used. So this is our way of narrowing the pool and making sure the contractors that work on this program are qualified and knowledgeable about Campbell's parklet program. In terms of timing, again, if adopted tonight, the program would launch on September twelfth. The application period proposed by staff would go till December second. Council will remember currently the temporary parklet program extends till October thirty-first. If if we do extend the availability of the application period to go beyond that, we are recommending to extend the temporary parklet program into January. If you'd like a shorter window, you could remain, you could keep the program as is. Where the parklet, temporary parklets would have to be removed on October thirty-first. What that would mean is the application window would be shortened from September to October. And again, after that, anyone who didn't apply for permanent parklet would have to remove their parklets. But staff is recommending to allow a little more time for the applicants and again, to extend that temporary program until the end of the year. Finally, this is the recommendations you have before you. These are legal requirements, which includes both the ordinance approving the addition of parklets into our municipal code. Resolution approving the parklet program guide. A resolution approving the fees to go with the program. And finally, the last one, which I just spoke to, was a resolution extending the temporary permanent parklet program to January ninth, two thousand twenty-three. With that, I'll close up and be available for questions. Thank you.
Hey, are there questions? Chief Counselwoman Landry?
Thank you. You had his hand up first, but I'll go ahead. So question, Rob. You have three options, an open-air parklet design, a parklet design with the shade covering and a parklet with the fixed roof. How many people have asked for a fixed roof? I think I only have seen, isn't there only one right now with the fixed roof?
My recollection today in the new temporary parklets, there are a few, but I'll let Michael Thomas answer in terms of interest of a fixed roof. Currently, there's one temporary temporary parklet with a fixed roof, but at least three current parklet operators have expressed interest of having a fixed roof in their park, in their semi-permanent parklet if they were to have one.
Okay, and then regarding this parklet design, I understand there'll be some level of customization, but to me that is like to meet ADA, the curb height, a drain inlet. That's not necessarily meaning that they can configure the barricades separately or they can pick a different material, correct?
That is correct.
So we're not giving them like two options of the materials they can pick?
No, I I expect, again, to your point, the customization, and it was surprising learning from Los Gatos staff how much those little details on the storming limits and the curve and the grades actually do come into the equation. So that that's the intent. If they, the materials would be the same. That was the whole point. You'd have a uniform design. One question would be, and we're still working this out, the consult, there's small details they'd like to do, like lighting or foliage. We would have some guidelines on that. But but generally, to answer your question, the materials and the look and the aesthetic of all the parklets would be the same. That was the point of the the uniform design of the program.
But someone could have plants and someone else may not have plants. Or are you going to require everybody to have a tree or a plant or?
Don't know the answer to the question yet. I I assume what we've seen is is they'll be using planters. And you know, I think the expectation to have a nice downtown, you would have those planters filled with plants, but you know, one type of plant versus another, I'm assuming we'd allow variations such as that.
Okay, and then my last question, under the paragraph that says the Sedell Parkivan has also identified they can work with staff for site customization for each parklet. Does the city become responsible for code deficiencies or does the architect become responsible if there's code deficiencies?
Well, that's a good question. I see my, I see your attorney is reaching for the the mic. So if you'd like to address that first.
I I guess the question is responsible to whom? The city could bear responsibility to members of the using public. I would assume that any contract we have with the with the contractor who's doing the customization would put that the burden on them to identify the city and essentially make them take responsibility.
Yeah, because ADA is a big issue and I think the indemnification would certainly be warranted in these contracts. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gibbons?
Thank you. So I wanted to, I have a couple of quick questions. On the waitlist, what ha- what happens if the a waitlist is in a totally new location? So how is is the plan, let me try and say it, is the plan that the one that's been there for six months now becomes removed and there's a vacancy and the waitlist starts to get initiated?
Not sure if I'm answering the question. So if the the waitlist would happen, we have thirty-two spaces open when let's just say we get thirty-four, thirty-six, the extra four would be waitlisted. And they, yeah, to answer your question, only two scenarios. One is if a parklet was removed, they could come in and fill that space and it would be in a different location. They would have to use the same templates and go through that customization process. The only scenario, again, we're asking to, we think it's advisable to come back in a year and look at the program. If for some reason in the future we expand a number of spaces, they could come back in in that scenario. Not sure if that answered your question, Councilmember Gibbons.
So thank you. What I'm trying to understand is what's the process for implementing the wake waitlist? Is there a criteria? Is it first come, first served? How do you anticipate, you know, handling that? Because that's always a challenge.
Right, right. We've put this into the program guide. I'll recycle from memory. Ask Michael to to fill in the blanks. We have, I think, probably four criteria. One is your restaurant good standing, two, you don't have any code issues. Three is your design meets our design parameters. And then four is we did have some preference for those who do have temporary parklets. So that was the one last aspect we put in the criteria. And again, we would rank, again, only if there's more applications than spots available. We would rank those according to that criteria and those who ranked the lowest would be on the waitlist.
Okay. I'm not sure that that's going to be definitive enough for the existing ones, but my question really was a waitlist. How is the waitlist going to be on a first come, first served basis?
Yes.
Okay. I was curious that under the fees, I was going to suggest you have an annual compliance verification fee of six hundred and two dollars. It might be easier for the rest of us to make it six hundred flat, but are you anticipating that being required the first year?
Yes, yes, we are.
Why would we require it the first year if they're going through all the permit approvals and all of that?
Well, my assumption, I'll look for Michael to fill in the blanks, is this would cover the first year after construction. So once the parklet is installed, they would pay the fee for the inspection verification for the year following installation.
So it's paying it forward?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And I assume the city has some program that they can take a security deposit and earn interest and all of that?
We do. Yeah, we have a fund of wealth security. We have a program where we're taking in security deposits for others and it would, it would, we would use the same program.
Okay, thank you. And another question has to do with the C U P. We, many, many of the restaurants have a C U P that stipulates the number of parking spaces that is associated with their business and the number of seats in the business. Is there any thought to how to move forward to reconcile any discrepancies between C U Ps and increasing the seating, seating load?
Yeah, this is a very good question. We cognitively recommend to not revisit C U Ps for the restaurants with this program. We know there's a variety of restaurants that either have C U Ps in good standing, are legally non-conforming, or somewhere in between. And but to open the the C U P for this parklet program, we we think would unravel a lot of those underlying land use issues. And it's our advice that given the temporary parklet program has worked well without having to revisit this and formalizing those spaces would continue this, not not to reopen the C U Ps for the restaurants with this program.
There might need to be some kind of legal documentation in part of their permit process or something to cover that. I don't know how. But if somebody comes back in five years and none of us are here, people may not understand that. I just offer that as a potential risk. The same question applies to at least two of the downtown businesses that have taken over private parking spaces to expand and create their own outdoor dining areas. And then there's also the areas outside the city which have done the same. What is the long term? Are you planning to come back to council with a resolution on that? And again, related to the C U Ps going forward, I appreciate that's not totally what's here, but it's an ancillary to what we're doing. And I I'm always concerned that we're focused on downtown and we have many, many businesses in our community in all kinds of situations.
No, it's a very good question. Not part of this program. This program is downtown only, only for public spaces. We will need to come back. I I think the intent is to learn from this parklet program, come back with standards and an approach for the rest of the private parking spaces, both in downtown and throughout the city, but it's not part of the program tonight.
So I would offer, the question is, we may end up needing to make modifications to the existing motions by council to apply to all of the private parking spaces and all the parking spaces outside of downtown. I've spoken to the city manager about that, but it it's a loose end that we want to make sure that we don't cause businesses a liability problem, I think. And let's see, in terms, sorry, yeah. In terms of design considerations, am I correct that the guiding principles, which I appreciate, that was all good? The design solutions will not have K rails. I noticed most of our other locations do not use K rails in their parklets.
We, they will not have K rails.
Oh, nicely done. Also, I think I brought this up when we were talking about it previously, that we've had a lot of challenging situations with the gas-fired heating elements. And are we going to follow up and do electric elements, heating elements?
Yeah, again, good, again, good question. This came up with our stakeholder response. So under, under, if gas is allowed, they would have to store them. That presents a barrier to most restaurants. I think we work with the fire department, see if there is an avenue for for them to allow gas. And if they can meet it, they could. But we anticipate in most instances, restaurants cannot. So the parklet designs will allow for electric heaters instead.
Okay, I think that's good. And frankly, the less gas methane we put in the air, no matter how attractive people like them, the better. So I would support that. And let's see, I got, I think I've got one more question. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lopez?
Thank you, Rob. A couple of clarifying questions about the report. You stated in here that the 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 city will work to prepare three designs and a cost not exceed thirty thousand. I I just want to clarify if that thirty thousand refers to the cost of the contract or to the cost of the designs?
Both. Under contract, they'll prepare the designs to be approved by the city and used for all parklets. Hopefully, it answers your question.
You 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 may have. I just want to clarify is I, when I say the cost of the designs, I mean the costs of the business. And I know we don't know that final amount yet. But just kinda, is that a totally different?
It is. Yeah, sorry. I didn't catch the nuance of the question. The the cost will be solely to prepare the standardized parklet designs that will be available to use. And and that that's the thirty thousand dollar cost.
And the cost of the businesses, we just don't know yet.
We we don't know. We're working with the architect to see if that thirty thousand contract will allow for some customization with each business. We know they've come out, they've looked at Campbell. The Evangel Campbell, it's a smaller space, so they have a good sense of the space and customization needs. But if we can't cover the ability to customize the designs for the applicants under the thirty thousand, again, we'd like, we'd use the whole contract. Above and beyond that, the applicants would have to pay for that customization cost, time and materials from the architects.
Okay, and I'll I'll come back to that topic in comments. My my other clarifying question is section G, packet page eighty-eight, you say an update on consulting contract status will be provided at the July fifth meeting. You you touched on the contract throughout, but I just want to check if there there is any other updates you wanted to provide.
I don't think so. We've, we're executing the contract. If we haven't executed it over this week, we have a kickoff meeting at the end of the week with the consultants. As part of the design preparations, they'll both be reviewed by the regulatory staff, which means building, public works, planning and fire, and then also have stakeholder meetings. But again, that's the updated, and again, the road is to have those designs ready by mid-August at the latest release September to bring them to council for review.
Great, and good transition. My last one, could you go back two slides in the presentation, please? Okay, I I I guess I'll have a comment later and come back to this, but thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Bybee.
So I had a question, Rob, about the schedule and it's different than what the council's previous action was to terminate the temporary parklet program as of October thirty-first. And now the application period, it looks like staff's recommending it run from September to December. Is there a specific reason why that it's such a long application period?
It's not. It it, you know, a few things. One is, I I think in February, when we asked for extension, we were feeling out how long it took. And October seemed like a good date at that point. As we got into this, two things, we've gotten closer to understanding the the timeframes, number one. Number two, getting to you, there's been a little bit of a delay. I I think we wanted to be before you in June, so I'd say on staff's time, there's at least, it's been a couple of weeks in delay. If we had launched back in June, I think October date might have made more sense. But yeah, I I mean, right now, we've put in a roughly three-month window to apply. I think part of that is it's an education process for the parklet owners. Once we have the costs available, that won't be till September. They're going to have to think about how much it costs to build these. But I think that's it. I in general, we've heard from the applicants, the ideal building time is not until January to March. And so we've lined up the application process to go to the end of the year and then transition into that building time. But beyond that, there's no magic. If needed, you could pull it back to October thirty-first. It'd be just a much shorter window for them for for them to apply.
It it just seems like a long period of, an application period for what seem, what in my mind should be a pretty streamlined process and. process and short application. I mean, by this time, I think businesses should know whether or not they want to participate in, in the semi-permanent. You know, we've been debating this for almost, well, about a year. And then the second part, the second question I had is, has there been any consideration given in the, in the preparation of the criteria to, for, for those businesses that have opened, have come into Campbell since the temporary parklet program was initiated, who didn't have the benefit of a temporary parklet? Who may want a semi-permanent parklet? Has there been any consideration to give them, I wouldn't say priority, but to allow them to have one? Given the fact that we may max out on those that already have the, the temporary. I, I know one of the stakeholders was at the meeting that you had, and, and there was one restaurant that was interested in, in wanting to have a parklet, but may not have an opportunity, and it seems a little bit unfair since they're new to, to the community, and it would be behoove us, I would think, to want to encourage them to have one if, if, if they so choose. So was there any consideration given in, in the discussions?
Yeah, I think it's at this point, one business we know of that, that's interested, but there could be more. I, I mean, I think we were trying to land a spot where it was a triple win with the program. So, so we designed a number of spaces, num- number one, to still allow the farmer's market to come in and meet their design parameters and allow the tent to two downtown events. And so that was generally status quo. Number two, to allow at least all the current restaurant owners to have a, a space. And then we actually put in a buffer, I think, of two to six additional spaces, which would even allow above and beyond the current restaurant owners to have some more come in. So our thinking is the number of spaces allowed, we won't have this competition, we're, we're gonna again have more demand and supply. In the criteria, we did, we did acknowledge and, and council, if, if directed, we could take it out, one prioritization for those who have temporary parklets. But again, because of all of those criteria, I think we believe that most of the stakeholders who are interested will be able to build the parklets under this program.
Rob, a few, a few questions, Rob. I, I have the same question about the three-month period. I, I may tie that into a different question. Going back, you, you made the comment about the offsetting of the, of the grant versus the buy-in and the buy-in being the refundable deposit. There's, there's a clause in here that kind of I think makes that awkward, and maybe is at odds with each other, two, two clauses at odds with each other. The idea is that that's a refundable deposit that would, that would pay for the removal, should they not remove it. But you also allow, I think, a hundred and eighty days for that parklet to stay there, should the business go out, so that the next business coming in could use the same parklet. But if that deposit is paid by the former business, and it costs less to get than three thousand dollars to take it down, it could come down in day one to get their money back. Which means that really the, 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 the parklet is not being built with the owner of the property, it's being built with a tenant of the property. Correct? But it's the new tenant of the property that would have to rebuild. So it seems to me if, if, if you tie that refundable deposit to a tenant that leaves, they can't transfer the deposit to the new tenant. The tenant doesn't exist, you recognize that for six months. You're gonna force them to take it down if the cost is less than three thousand dollars, right? There's money back. If the cost is more, they'll walk away. So I don't think the deposit works. The deposit also, I, I, let me ask you, it's a question. So, so do I have that correct? And, and is there any way to reconcile those two clauses? Let me leave it.
Yeah, no, it's, it's a great question. I, I'll look to Stephen to verify. I believe we designed the ordinance in a way that the owner, the property owner, would hold a security deposit exactly for that reason. That a restaurant might go belly up, leave, and it's, it's an asset that's there. If they're, they're out there to lease the space, you could advertise that you have the parklet also. Again, we didn't want that scenario where there's a gap of six months and a new restaurant comes in and they want a parklet and the parklet's gone. So the owner would own the security deposit. They could have it for six months, they could apply for an extension. At some point, if, if no one moves in and it becomes a blight issue, we'd have to remove it. But the intent was not to have the restaurant own the security deposit, instead the property owner, to have that continuity between different restaurants.
And you're saying the property owner would pay the three thousand upfront?
That's correct. They, they would own the security.
And do we know that whether the property owners will do that? And then in that case, the property owner's out three thousand, the grant goes to building the park with which is being paid for by the tenant, I assume, right?
That's correct.
So it doesn't offset. The tenant is still getting a three thousand dollar break, but the property owner is out three thousand dollars. So, so they're not, they're not offsetting.
Right, well, a lot of that would, would be left to the discussions between the, the tenant and owner. I mean, it's, it's not atypical in, in every land use application, the owner has to, the owner, the owner signs the application and usually an applicant will, will sort of like a conditional use permit own it. But again, it was our way to try and maintain continuity between restaurants to have the security deposit owned by the owner and not the restaurant. Because you, we would run into that issue, where we might have to remove parklets and have a restaurant come in three weeks later and want to build a new parklet.
Have you talked to property owners versus just the tenants?
We have not yet.
Stephen, did you want to add to that?
Yeah, I just want to speak briefly to the, the adequacy of the deposit. So the way we also structured it, we thought about it a lot, and one of the things we came up with was, i- it is a minimum of three thousand dollars. The code does provide an opportunity for that to be scaled up in the event the cost to remove a parklet increases over time. So we have that, where the deposit which we take in every year is part of that annual check that we're doing on these. We could take in the delta, any, any difference between what we've now assessed the cost of removal to be and whatever, whatever security deposit which we have on file. The second thing is, it's best to imagine that the way that we wrote this up too, it's a three thousand dollar deposit, which is to cause the removal of the parklet. So, yes, it could be used towards the actual cost of removal or for code enforcement activities to compel the owner to cause the removal of it at their own cost that might exceed the three thousand dollar deposits. It's written in both ways. So the deposit is, it's to help us get there. It might not be the full cost of recovery, but it's, it's written so we can at least have some skin in the game for a property owner to cause the removal of the parklet.
Okay, I, I guess, I guess my confusion is then, if I understand it right, it doesn't work unless the owner pays the three thousand. And, and secondly, correct? And secondly, in the attempt to provide grant money to make this easier for the tenants to build, they're not, they're not offsetting, so I'll look at the numbers, but they're not offsetting. So there's some, okay.
That's true. We, we did, again, it was, we have a problem statement, which is, which is restaurants might go bankrupt in their instances where you'd want to keep the parklet there. And so again, to looking at options to solve the problem statement, to keep it completely with the restaurant, I think, I think, I think we were gonna run into situations where the parklet would be removed and the next restaurant we wanted. So the, the solving of that, the only one we could identify was to keep the security deposit with the property owner.
Okay, and I understand, this is, you can't, it's very difficult to solve some conflicting things here. I want to ask about the survey. So in our, in the copy we got, were the, were the respondents in fact anonymous? Or is this anonymous to us, but you know who the respondents are?
Yes, I'm gonna ask Michael to, to address the survey questions.
Uh, the respondents were anonymous.
So why, why is that? I mean, we're, we're, I understand surveys that do that, but in this case, we are trying to enter into a business arrangement and know who is very interested in this, who's gonna pony up tens of thousands of dollars and whose input we want. I would think for two reasons, we want to know this, one, to know who are those initial ones that may fill up the first parklets and are, and are interested. And also, I'd want to know who were the ten that didn't respond? Was any attempt made to identify who didn't respond? So two parts there.
Yeah. I, you know, I didn't reach out to see who didn't respond. I, I released it electronically and then I hand-delivered an invitation with a QR code for every restaurant to take the survey. Now, as to who took and who didn't take it, I don't know.
And who attended the second stakeholder meeting after the survey was done?
Yeah, that was Flights, Tretoria Three Sixty, Katie Blooms.
How, how many? I just have.
There were, like, there were ten in the audience, if I recall correctly.
So presumably the ten that, ten that responded. I guess, I guess, I guess what I'm asking is this goes also to the vice mayor's question about priorities and maybe waitlists from council member Gibbons. If there wasn't an attempt to figure out who were the ten or twelve that are, that truly, truly want to be in there and maybe they're today and are taking up most of the spots. So then we could say, potentially, I'm trying to keep this to a question, you know, are there new businesses that came in that want to be in there that we can recognize? And also, we could, we, if ten of twenty-four didn't respond, if, how do we, without knowing who they are in advance, now input comes in later, you know, this is a period of time to get input, and this is a period of time to get interest. How do we reconcile, do you see, I, I'm trying to ask you the question of how do we reconcile when they come in later on? Could this not have been used as a way to say, we need responses, and the, and the, and the first priority maybe could go to those who responded and provided input and helped develop the program? Because they had an interest in developing the program.
Sure, it, there, there's a variety of ways. I mean, one, one argument the other way is, is if you make everyone who responded public, they're sometimes a little less frank about what they have to say. I mean, that's an argument back, I'm not making it anonymous.
Excuse me, just to clarify, I'm not even suggesting public even to us, but public within economic development. So you can judge the value of that feedback, and the, the feedback value has, I would assume, has to ties in somewhat with the interest, you know, the first, very serious about it is better feedback than the, you know, I'm not interested, age is too high.
Sure. Yeah, and, and again, to Michael's point, I mean, he's, he's going to these restaurants, he's talking to the owners, he's asking to apply, he's giving the QR code. I, I, I think we beat, beat the pavement to try and get the, the, the restaurant owners to come and give us feedback. One point to your question, again, I think on the supply and demand issue, we've designed the program where we don't, we don't think we'll have existing restaurants, any situation with temporary parklets, where they're not gonna get a parklet. So we've designed in a way where there's enough parklets in the pool to satisfy both all those who have an existing parklet, plus at least one to two new restaurants.
Okay, I'll hold the rest for, for comments, then. Councilmember Gibbons, your hand is still up. Do you have more comments or?
Yeah, I, thank you. I just did have two questions. One is, we still do street cleaning and sidewalk cleaning, am I correct? And?
That's correct.
Okay, and that is taken into consideration in the designs?
That is correct, but if Public Works Director, if there's anything to add.
So I'm specifically thinking of, do we steam clean or power wash the parklets? Or is that part of the street sidewalk cleaning, or is that on the owner or the restaurant?
So, so, so Public Works only power washes the sidewalks. I, I think it's been our broad expectation the parklet owners need to maintain their own parklets.
Okay, just clarifying that, thank you. And then you're saying, you're assuming that it's thirty thousand dollars for construction? And I wanted to clarify, some parklets will be one parking space and some will be two based on the storefrontage, correct?
That is correct.
So is it thirty thousand per park, parking space?
The three thousand dollar, I'm verifying where that's coming from. Do, do you have a source for that, council? Because we don't have a final cost yet on the parklet construction.
It's in the staff report. Sorry, I gotta go back in. It's in the staff report on page thirteen or of the packet, it's page five of eight of the staff report. And it's just above paragraph F, parklet removal. The second paragraph says, in addition to providing for a reduced application fee and construction grant, the city would also cover the cost of establishing three, oh, I misread that, okay. Three template designs. I was thinking that was the construction cost. I misread that. Thank you for that. And I agree with council member or vice mayor Bybee and the mayor questions about selection criteria. I think that that's still a little loose. Thank you.
Councilmember Lopez?
Liz, I had the same confusion about the thirty thousand, so don't feel too bad. I wanted to fall to the, the mayor's line of, of questionings about the security deposit, which I, I appreciate that, that, that's it, it's been important to me that the final program serves the, the needs and of the businesses and that there's interest. Could there be a, a structured, you know, question where the tenant pays the three thousand, but it then stays, however it's structured, whether it goes to the owner or, you know, it then stays with the owner? Is, is that something that we could build in or encourage?
I think, yeah, that's one to know, we talked about, I think, to bridge between restaurant owners. If the, if the property owner is willing to carry that between restaurant owners, that's, that's a scenario. That could happen.
Okay, I, and I, and, and then my follow-up, I would just be curious to know the business owner's response to that, but glad that it's an option.
Councilmember Landry?
Yeah, I've mentioned this twice before about construction period. And would it help to close a block, to have a couple constructed or close one lane to give access? So, because construction will take longer, the more limited access is. So have you considered that?
I think, and noted the comment before, I, I think it's our intent to work with the contractors, the restaurants, to have a staged approach, which, which would be block by block. I, I don't think we're to the point yet where we know the details of that, but just where there's not different parts of the street being affected. For our Public Works Director, if he has anything to add to that.
Yeah, I would just, more room, you can give them the quicker or cheaper it's gonna be. So that, that's my comment that I keep making. Thank you.
Okay, one other question for you, Rob. Can I ask, where did you get the estimates for the survey of thirteen thousand five hundred to eighty thousand for the construction? That's a very wide range.
Well, I looked at Michael to verify, but we asked our, I think it's a couple of points. One is, we asked our building official to look at and to estimate costs. And I think we got some from other jurisdictions.
Jurisdictions and then survey response.
Yeah, so estimated costs are due to research of other jurisdictions and survey responses from the question, the most recent questionnaire.
So, okay, thirteen, five just seem very, very low. Okay, thank you. No other questions, what we'll do is we'll open the public hearing and ask if there's anybody in the public wishing to speak on this item. Do we have any cards in the house? Ken said no? You're welcome to speak if you'd like to, going down. Please come down to the mic of two minutes. Give us your name if you would, please. Is, is the mic on?
Okay, please, go ahead. Yeah, I agree with you with the deposit. I think the tenant should be responsible. I own one restaurant which I pay, I'm a tenant, and I own two other restaurants which I'm a landlord. And when you put the tenant responsible, he must take care of everything all the time. If you put a landlord, it's never gonna be there, it's never gonna, that's me, that's what I believe. And to be, the, the way you're gonna build the, the structure is up to you. But the only thing I believe, we should not really follow the Los Gatos idea, because I like some stuff, but they're not very safe. Like they put some iron metal, like iron fans, and that's very dangerous, especially if you have kids. They can put their leg out or anything and think about you are on the street, that's mean, that's very danger. And the reason I ask for, to put like a more permanent roof, one thing you can put the gas heated lamp, which wouldn't have to move all this electrical from the restaurant to connect to the inside is more safe. And also when it's very windy and everything, it's not gonna fly away, that's me. And the other thing is, is a little bit problem at night, I don't know how you guys are gonna figure out this, but some homeless that turn the, the parklet like a wrestle, you know, and that's me, that's something you should consider. That's it.
Thank you very much, appreciate the input. Ken, you're not gonna, you're not gonna sit here all night and not join. Come on down, Ken. Were you still calling in, so?
So this is my first time back, and I love what you've done with the place, it's fantastic.
Thank you.
Ken Johnson, Executive Director of the Campbell Chamber, really just a couple of things. One, I sincerely appreciate the outreach to the chamber and getting our input on this. We stand supportive of the semi-permanent parklets again. It does affect our, us for the festivals. However, I think the long-term benefits to the city and what we've heard from the downtown businesses I think the long-term benefits to the city, uh, and what we've heard from the downtown businesses is another, anybody who's opposed to it. So it really is going to come down to, uh, that definition of skin in the game, to how many businesses are really going to participate.
Okay.
So, but we stand supporting it and appreciate the input we've been able to give.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments about, you know, you can always, Zoom is always an option for you. Thank you. Anybody else in the chamber like to speak on this? Seeing none? Do we have anybody online?
We do not.
Okay, thank you. Now we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion. Councilmember Lopez?
Um, so I want to start by saying I really appreciate the, um, department's work on this. Um, and, and you, you skimmed over a lot in the summary, but really you can see in the report the depth to which different considerations are informed by all the discussions you've been having, what works and what, what doesn't. And I appreciate the, the frankness and the ability to, to learn, um, fro, from where, where others could, could do better. In addition to the, it's all the, the outreach. Um, so I'll start by saying that in, in large part, I'm, I'm in support of what's here. I think the fees are generally, um, appropriate. I don't think they're exorbitant. I, I think, um, I, I think they show, you know, the subsidies and the grant that the city is also supporting the, the businesses, um, which, which is important to me. Um, um, but that, that's it. I do have a few different comments, and I appreciate the, the discussion, um, greatly, which, which has been helpful. Um, oh, and, and I want to thank also the commenters, um, today, very, very helpful, um, for our consideration. Um, as, as well as people who, who wrote in, which included, um, a, uh, business owner, not a, not a restaurant owner who was supportive. Uh, so that's all helpful feedback. Um, the, the, the bottom line for me is, as, as I've said a number of times, as earlier today, making sure that the program, um, is appropriate and, and something that businesses can use. And so stemming from that, there's a couple of considerations. One, I'll just say, you know, I said it before and don't need to, um, uh, to spend too much time on it tonight. Um, but it, it is important to me that the designs that we get back reflect a realistic cost. Um, and, and whether that means limiting some of the options or, you know, the, the, um, the, the, the construction costs need to be something that is actually realistic for the businesses and won't just, um, automatically, um, put it out of reach for, for, for many of them. So I'll, I'll just put that for, for the future. Um, clearly, the security deposit issue is, is important to, to get right. Um, and so I'm, I'm leaning towards, at, at this point, I'll open ideas if there are better ones, but something like what I was getting at in my question, um, where the, the, the tenant eats the cost, but knowing that they're also getting subsidies and support in other ways, and then it, it stays with the business owner. It, it's just hard for me to imagine if we're just expecting the business owner to, to pay it. Um, that, 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 that's gonna be something that, that is realistic to, to support. Um, I, I, I am, I know we're aiming, so, so that's my general comments on the program. Uh, I know that we're aiming to bring back the designs in August. Uh, I'm a little nervous that if it goes into December, it could bump up against what's on the, uh, the, the timeline here and get too close to the program launch. And, and also, I, I just say I agree with some of the comments that, uh, maybe if it works for the businesses and works for the department, that I think that application timeline could probably, um, be, be shortened, um, and, and make it, uh, a little more efficient. Um, um, yeah, so, so, uh, those are my comments, open to discussion on other ideas, if there are other ways to address some of the issues that have been brought up, but bottom line, indeed, the, the program needs to work for, for the businesses.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Goodes?
Thank you. Uh, along those lines, uh, I am concerned about the construction costs. And, uh, if it's estimated to be thirty thousand per parking space, that could be sixty thousand per restaurant. We have several restaurants that have two parking spaces. That's a substantive, uh, amount of money. Um, and to get a return on investment, um, I think is tough. Uh, frankly, I would be wondering if the city could not in fact do a no, no interest loan for four or five years or some way of doing that. Because, um, you know, thirty to sixty thousand dollars is a big deal. And I think that's probably realistic if you do a covered, um, a nicely done, uh, parklet. Uh, and I'm, nothing's been mentioned about side curtains, but in the weather here, we probably have to make sure that there's the ability to have, um, side curtains. I'm not sure what the thoughts are on that. So, uh, I think that, um, the program as provided and the funds that are provided, I'm okay with having either the business owner or the restaurant, um, pay the fee. I think staff has to reach out to the property owners, um, first, but I'm going to guess, as, um, Pino just said, it's really going to be the businesses that are going to pay, um, pay that. Um, I would recommend separating out the annual fee, um, six hundred and two dollars, I'd say six hundred dollars from the, it's too caught up in the cost of the parklets and the programs. Um, because it really is a separate fee like a business license, so I think it would be helpful to have that separated out. Um, and I'm not sure a three thousand dollar grant, again, related to the thirty thousand or sixty thousand, um, is sufficient. Uh, I think, um, I guess it was Sergio, uh, Councilmember Lopez who said, you really, really, really need to have a solid understanding of the construction cost. And only then are you going to get a commitment for the businesses to, um, select what they're willing to, um, to do. So I, I think that's really, really, um, important. So I'm supportive with a couple of tweaks. One is allowing for side curtains, two, um, finding a way to, to help with, when the final construction cost is known. I think, um, Mayor Resnikov, your question about who's really viably interested in the program is really going to be determined when they find out what the investment is. And I am open to having the city grant be greater than three thousand dollars, uh, depending on the information from the construction cost and the level of interest, uh, which is a finance, maybe a financial burden.
Thank you. Councilmember Landry?
Yes, thank you. Uh, thank you to staff and everybody that's been working on this. We've made a lot of progress. It's taken a while, but we're getting there, hopefully quicker. Um, I think the application period is a little long. Um, that's what September, that's like, what, four months? And it seems like it could be thirty days, forty-five days maybe. Um, so that we have a better understanding of this, uh, going to Jan, January ninth, which I do support extending, which right now ends in October, so I, I support extending it to January ninth. Um, I think Pino's, Pino's comment about some of them in Los Gatos, the railing is very much in the middle, and you could stick your legs out of the bottom or a kid could roll out. And I know we're only six inches or less above grade, but because we have traffic going by, I would think you'd want to meet the code of four inches on center that nothing can stick through. Um, I would hope the architect designs to the construction cost. And is that thirty thousand the base, or is that the thirty thousand with the canopy or thirty thousand with the solid roof? I'm assuming the roof is going to go up. But I would like to see the architect have their design definitely well costed out and not to exceed that thirty thousand. Um, like I said about closing the lane and traffic, I would have you consult with maybe a contractor or two, um, that may be the ones that have built in Los Gatos. Uh, because I know some of those took a long time. And they took up extra parking spaces during construction because they couldn't access out into the street. So seriously, look at whether you close one lane in one direction or close a block, but give the contractor enough room as possible. And my last comment is, this design and the selection of materials need to reflect Campbell. This is going to make a huge statement of who we are as a city. Uh, we get so many people that really like our downtown, and I want to make sure it is reflective of Campbell and our small town charm. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Bybee?
Thank you. So I'm, I'm generally supportive of the, of the program as presented. I would like to see a shorter application period. I just think that the three months, almost four months is a bit too long. Um, as far as the refundable deposit, I, I think that the uh, business should be paying it, not, not the property owner. I think it gets kind of murky there if, if the property owner, um, is required to pay it, but I also am, um, still trying to understand the purpose of the refundable deposit because the, the fee for the refundable deposit is three thousand dollars. And yet the grant that we're going to possibly approve is going to be three thousand dollars. So to me, it seems like a wash, that it, it's in and out, and, and it, and it's so if you're going to give the grant, then why would you um, require the refundable deposit? And the other part of the refundable deposit, um, issue is that, to me, it seems like this, the city has to keep, uh, track of these deposits for what could be five years, six years, ten years, fifteen years. And we've had some issues in the past with auditing and, and refundable deposits that have been on the books for, for a long time that weren't, weren't, um, addressed properly. So it would be, be important that if we're going to require the refundable deposit, that there's a mechanism by staff in order to monitor those and, and keep abreast of those. And I think the selection criteria needs to be tightened up a little bit. To me, it's a bit vague. And, um, one suggestion might be to, um, consider an application date that if somebody submits an early application, um, that, that gets priority over, um, uh, others. So that might be one, 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 one way to, um, tighten it up a little bit. But other than that, I, I think it's a good program, and I, I think it's going to benefit the businesses in the long run.
Thank you. Um, in general, I'm, I'm supportive as well, just a few comments. I, I too would think that the application period could be reduced. Um, primarily too, because I'd like to know those most interested will jump in right away that it's, this has been a year, year and a half. So I don't think it's, um, it's new to most people and it's going to be, um, newest to those who are just coming in now or just came, or came in after the last program. But a lot of those will still have interest, so they would jump in as well. So I think that would, that would let us gauge who is very serious about this. The deposit problem is, um, i- i- is unique, I think. And, and by the way, Pino, thank you for helping. As, as a, as a tenant and a landlord, it's a, it's a great perspective. I agree. I don't think that the landlords are going to pay this. I think that the restaurants have to pay it. The problem is, back to my original question, the incentive is to get that thing down as soon as you leave because you want your money back. And then it doesn't stay up for six months for the next one, and then we lose one. So my suggestion is, um, we get rid of it. You just, first, let's start with this, the three thousand construction grant offsets the three thousand. The city's cost to doing the grant is three thousand per site. Um, the city's cost, if nobody has a bond on the removal and we have to pay for it, is apparently three thousand dollars a site. And since not every site's coming down, our, our, our exposure is even less. So right there, I'd say you get rid of it. We don't have any less exposure. In fact, we don't have any more exposure. In fact, we have less exposure. Then Councilmember Gibbons made a comment, and I agree with this, once we get the construction costs and we see the interest, there may be, um, some reason that we just come back with a different grant and pay even a bigger percentage of it. If you look at the survey, um, boy, they were really evenly spent on wanting up to twenty-five percent, twenty-five to fifty and above fifty as some kind of assistance, get averaged out right into the middle. Um, once we see the costs, let's have conversations with them and see what's realistic, and I'm open to spending some money at that point to do it. Um, without a bond to try to get it back later. And then, um, the last thing is, just a comment, um, i- if we do any more of these surveys or, 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 um, for this or for something else, I would love to see, rather than raw numbers, some analysis. And, and the reason is, if you actually go through the numbers, ten, ten responses, twelve responses is probably hardly scientific, but it is ten or twelve, they're interested in this specific thing, so it's relevant. What I, what I found interesting was, there was an overwhelming interest of the respondents to do it. Let's start with that conclusion. There were a couple that were, you know, everything sixes and sevens and then one, one and two. You know, we always throw out the top and the bottom. In this case, if we throw out the two bottom, it goes over six and a half average of the people that want to do it, which to me is very significant. There was a lot of commonality in about the amount they wanted to be, um, subsidized or, or financial assistance. With the exception of one of the people that rated the idea of doing this very low, some of the people we've had higher cost estimates than us, which surprised me, which makes me believe closer to the sixty to eighty is probably accurate. They were very consistent in the number of years they needed to, to be there and in when they wanted the building to go. So I'd like, I think it would help us, just in the future, raw data is great, but to understand the trends here. This actually was a very supportive response to doing this program, to doing with a subsidy, to doing it in the fall or winter, and to keeping it there at least three or four years, and I think it's really consistent. So that's starting point. Um, I think we got some very good data here. It would help us to, um, to get those conclusions. And I would, I would urge us in a situation like this where there's really no reason to be anonymous, let's get people wanna, who want to speak up and tell us what they think and, and the ones that are most interested are going to step up and come here in person and, and speak. I don't think there's any negative to it. Um, and if they don't want to do it, there's nothing wrong with that either. So all in all, though, I'm, I'm in favor of it. I think we're going to have to tweak the amount that we may be put into the program. Um, but we need to know what that cost really is, and we need to know how many are really interested, and then tweak that piece at the end. And I think sooner than the end of the year, we could know exactly who the ten or twelve or fourteen are and, and get going. So, um, Rob, you had?
Yeah, I was, I was taking copious notes and trying to put a circle around the consistent feedback with some constructive solutions that I think will address all of them. Um, so I'll, I'll come back with, one is, I think I heard general consensus to tighten the application window, and we could do that. Now make it much shorter, we could have it end at the end of October. Uh, so it gets people in faster, number one. Uh, number two, adding in a bit more on the criteria, and this is, this is good, get people to apply early, have a criteria where first in is ranked higher, and we can add that into the criteria. Uh, three, on the design issues, we'll pass those on to the consultant and make sure that they're hearing that. I think they're actually listening tonight. And one is, you could pause on the, again, on the subsidy tonight, because again, there's a lot of unknowns. We gave ranges on construction, but we won't know the cost until the designs come back. So one option, probably a logical option, is to wait on the subsidy, have the designs come back. Uh, make sure the, the architects mean those design feedback, and then when you have those construction costs, come back to the subsidy question. Those areas of consensus, right? I think those would solve those issues. On two more issues, so under deposit, two options, one would be keep the deposit, allow the restaurant owner to hold it, and just allow an option if the restaurant owner is walking to have the property owner be a bridge between the first restaurant owner and the second restaurant owner. That might solve the issue and the questions with the property owners. That's the suggestion. Or two, to your point, Mayor Resnikov, this one, you counsel direction to, I think your suggestion was to remove the security deposit. The advice back from staff is, and as Senior Planner Rose mentioned, it's not always three thousand dollars equals the actual need for the labor and so forth. It's really, they have skin in the game and you get their attention, uh, that it needs to be removed. So if you do remove that, uh, it, it is a bit harder sometimes to get their attention. If it turns in the blight and it's sitting there, uh, to get them to actually take care of it. So, so something to consider. So those two options, one is to allow the restaurant owner to hold the security deposit with that, that one option, or two, to remove it all, altogether. You'd have to weigh in on that. And I think that is about it. We have a lot of, I have a lot of notes on the design, which we'll pass to the architect. But if I missed anything, um, go ahead and let me know.
I, I, okay, I agree with that, Rob. I would just suggest that we can't go down the path of, of requiring business owners to pay it or hold it when we haven't had any conversations with business owners. I think we, we would certainly, if we want to go down that path, need your department to contact them and let's get some feedback on that. A second comment is, um, so if these things cost, uh, make up sixty thousand dollars and we even subsidized fifty percent of it, I would argue that that thirty thousand dollars is getting more skin in the game than worrying about if they put three thousand dollars up. They have a significant amount, and the three thousand isn't as significant. And lastly, just that, um, if the purpose is to make sure things are maintained, it's called code enforcement. We have code enforcement, so, so we can tie in. I mean, if there are violations, we have other avenues to make sure they're fixed. And if they're not fixed, it gets removed. And then we're back to the cost being roughly three thousand dollars, which was our cost to pay a grant, so we're even again. So it's just my, there, but I think we should get more information on the costs and on the, and on the feedback from other property owners. Because we're presuming that they would want to hold money or pay money. I don't know that that's the case.
I think, one, just one comment back, I'll look at Steve, and I don't think, I think you, we could pause and bring that back. I'm just looking at the ordinances. It's, it's Ked and I have the ordinance adopted to start the program. But I want to make sure they don't need to adopt the security. But I want to make sure they don't need to adopt the security deposit tonight, that that can come back in August. Stephen knows the ordinance construction.
Can we omit that and/or cite it as something to be determined later?
You, you don't need to establish the dollar amount of fee. The ordinance does provide the requirement for security deposit. So it'd just be a silent requirement as to the dollar amount, as to my understanding.
Okay. So as it, Bill, as is written, would be okay if we were moving forward?
Y- yes, you could. I mean, it, it would, it would have to be a 60-day period of time as a fee to be effectuated. So you'd have to, it would be another, yeah, you go September, October, November, until that fee would be in effect where it could be paid to be holding up applicants from submitting and being fully compliant with the program requirements. So that'd be the, the key date there.
Does the motion, does the motion is written then include a number or no?
No.
No, so, so we could.
It just requires a security deposit, not the amount.
Okay.
But that, does that language then prohibit us from not having a security deposit if that's the decision in future?
That's, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, I my understanding from all this, um, advice would be to keep the, the language there. We can nullify the amount tonight. So it gives you the option. Come back in August, you'll have the designs, you'll have the costs, you can come back on the subsidy. At that point, you could add in the security deposit. To Stephen's point, it would take another 60 days to be effective, but I think that's fine because from August through September, October, applicants aren't actually getting their final permits and constructing these. So there's, there's a, there's a window there for the fee to become effective for the supply, security deposits to be paid if that's the will of the council. So you could defer, again, defer the subsidy discussion, just defer the amount of a security deposit until you come back in, in August.
Okay, okay. Vice Mayor Bybee?
So if you can follow up on that, according to the ordinance though, it, it, the wording in the ordinance says that it, the, the amount will be established by the schedule of fees and charges, which is, is done by resolution. But it also says that every three years following the receipt of the initial security deposit, an additional security deposit shall be paid to account for any difference in the security deposit held by the city and the security deposit required by the city's most recently adopted schedule of fees and charges. That's, hasn't even been discussed.
Well, well, to the, so again, to the earlier questions on the maintenance, the intent of that was to, to have staff maintain the amount of security deposit, again with CPI and costs, to see if a security deposit needs to be increased over time due to, uh, the costs that's associated with it.
If I may.
But that, that seems like it, there should be some information given to the, to the, either the property owner or the restaurant owner, that that's likely to increase in, in every three years.
Well, I, I mean, I guess I think in general to address this, my advice, given there's so many questions on security deposit, go ahead with the ordinances tonight, come back in August with the three things. You have the security, you have the cost of the program and you can weigh back in on the cost of the subsidy and the security deposit. And we can, we can further answer some questions and do outreach with property owners between now and then on what the security deposit is, what the options are and what would go along with it. And again, you can then weigh in on this on August when you have more information on the, the costs of the.
Councilmember Gibbons, I see your hands up.
Thank you. Sorry. I think there's a, a strong tendency, um, on the council just to eliminate the, um, uh, security, refundable security deposit, um, and eliminate all the language in the ordinance. It just seems, I, I appreciate wanting skin in the game, but I think the mayor said it correctly. The city is more at risk uh, and invested than the property owners or the businesses. I'm, I'm fine with eliminating, and I think others are just eliminating that entire section of the ordinance and having staff come back with, um, solid information on the construction cost and the appropriate subsidy, uh, when that's known. And then also clarify that the application form required whatever money has to be submitted is at what point in the application process needs to have the money in, uh, handed over to the city.
The city attorney, is it possible, is it an option to remove that wording, but as needed, bring it back in August, if in August or September, whenever this comes back, we, we choose to do so? Does that create more problems than, than, than deferring it tonight?
It delays the ability to, uh, take in a security deposit, but, uh, it, it certainly can be done. You can eliminate that, that particular subsection that calls for a security deposit. Uh, you could possibly adopt the security deposit by resolution without it being per se in the ordinance, which would, uh, cut down the timing somewhat.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Lopez?
Uh, I'm, I'm just, I, 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 I'm not sure tonight that I'm, uh, wanting to eliminate it outright. I, I just think we need more information. And with the, my understanding now, reach that's been done, the contours of the program have included that there would be a security deposit and so far it doesn't seem as if that, that, that's been, you know, I, I, I think that's been the understanding. And so just in terms of the, the process and wanting the, um, I, they still give us flexibility if we want to go in that direction, but also, um, you know, have a, a smoother process. I, I'm not sure I have enough information tonight to support taking it out. Doesn't mean I'm not open to it in, in the future. Um, but I would just be cautious of going down that path tonight. And, and, and then I just wanted to make a comment to follow from the discussion. It's, and I, 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 I wanted to know that, you know, we started out saying we may get the, the construction cost estimates back in August, maybe September. We, we, we now in this period have been saying August, and I'm just cognizant that, that the, you know, where that, that, that's, there's a lot on your plate and I, I just want to make sure we're not setting ourselves up for not failure, but for having a, a crunch of, you know, have to get everything in, but you know, um, eh, with, with everything else going on around that time. So I, I, I just would, I don't want to, I, I want to try to avoid a situation where there's, there's one date that we either have to hit it or, or the, the program is, is thrown, uh, off, off the rails and, and the, uh, the, the businesses, you know, face a, a lack of clarity. So anything we can do to, to avoid that would, would be positive.
Okay, thank you. Um, we'll move and see if there's a motion here. And I agree with you. I have no problem leaving it in. I think we've raised some logistical issues of it, does it make sense? Can it be done? And is it even to the city's benefit to do it? So wrap some more information. Is there someone willing to make a motion and figure out how to do that?
Well, I'll make a motion and I guess what I'm hearing back and forth here is that we keep the motion as the recommended action, which keeps the ordinance and the, um, resolution the way it is now, because we can always take it out later, right? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm going to read the recommended re-action that the city council introduced an ordinance adding chapter 11.15 bracket, parklets in the public right of way to the Campbell Municipal Code. Adopt a resolution approving the adoption of a semi-permanent parklet program guide. Adopt a resolution approving an amendment to the city's master fee schedule, adding fees and deposits related to the parklets in the public right of way, providing for a one-time construction grant to program ac- applicants and approving associated budget adjustments to fiscal year 23 and adopt a resolution extending the temporary parklet program to January 9th of 2023.
I'll second. So a motion by Councilmember Landry, second by Councilmember Lopez. Can we roll call vote please?
Uh, sorry, can I ask? So, um, I, I just want to be sure on the record. We're confirming that there would be no CUP, um, modifications to, um, a business participating, participating in the parklet, temporary parklet program. Um, and I guess this is a side one that doesn't really need to be into the motion, which is to come back with, with those other areas, um, on private property and throughout the city. But on this one, I would say, and that adjustments to CUPs for those businesses taking it, um, participating in the temporary pocket program, uh, are not required.
And Bill, is that implied in the motion as this?
No, it is not.
So is that added as a friend, is that offered as a friendly amendment? Except.
I thought you were asking her.
Yes, yes.
Well, she nodded, uh, Councilmember Gibbons nodded yes. So I'm asking you if you accept it as a.
Okay, so reworded in a shorter sentence. I, I think the way you wanted it worded is the CUP is not to be affected at this point.
I think we're saying, we're saying the same, we're saying the same thing.
It's not required, um, is not triggered based on the parklet.
Okay, so the CUP is
modification.
Is modification is not affected by what we're doing right now.
Correct.
And my seconder.
Yeah, okay. So that, so the motion is, uh, has the friendly amendment added. Now can we get a roll call? Oh, I'm sorry.
I have a question on the, um, so the resolution for the, for the fees and the construction grant specifically says $3,000, but from what I've just heard, we, it, the subsidy may be greater than that. We haven't decided on that. So should we be adopting a resolution authorizing the $3,000 when it might well change once we get additional information about the construction costs?
And it could go away.
I, I think it's great. If the intent of the council was to later discuss those fee schedules, I'd defer, um, passing the resolution amending the fee schedule with those amounts. Um, I think the action you're looking for tonight is the introduction of the ordinance, uh, and the program guide. And the, the other items would be, uh, resolutions we'd bring back to you at a future discussion.
Can I, can I clarify your question? You were asking about the grant, weren't you not the, not, not the deposit?
No, I'm talking about the grant that
Yeah.
For the resolution specifically says $3,000 grant, but from what I'm hearing, there may, may be some decision at a future date that it might be greater than the $3,000. So.
Do we have flexibility?
You can always amend the amount at a later date. Uh, if, if you want to take it out now, that's certainly fine. Um, or you could leave it in there. And if it turns out you want to provide more or less, that just takes another resolution.
So, but my understanding was that when it comes back, based on what we hear, we may or may not have a deposit. If we have a deposit, then we probably have a grant. But if we don't, we may not, and we can fix all of that. Then essentially we're tweaking the, we're tweaking the resolutions at that point.
And the grant could go up or down.
Yeah, okay.
Question though.
So we have the flexibility to, to, to figure out, because one, one change is very likely going to impact the, the deposit might impact the grant vice versa. So we're okay doing this and then modifying as need be next, at next time it comes back?
Correct. You, you would essentially have a, a starting point that
Okay.
as staff recommended, but you can certainly modify that.
Okay.
Question, does that set up an expectation of the person's going to get the 3,000 grant?
No more than it sets up the expectation that they have to pay a deposit. We don't know yet.
Okay, then my motion stands.
Okay, so any other comments?
Motion stands with friendly amendment.
Yes. So now, now we'll ask for a roll call vote.
Councilmember Gibbons?
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Councilwoman Landry?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bybee?
Aye.
Mayor Resnikoff?
Aye, thank you.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Campbell, amending chapter 11.15 parklets in the public right of way to the Campbell Municipal Code, file number PLN 2022 dash 39.
Way further reading.
Can I make a motion?
We have a, we have a motion by Councilmember Gibbons. Is there a second? Second by Councilwoman Landry. Can we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Gibbons?
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Councilwoman Landry?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bybee?
Aye.
Mayor Resnikoff?
Aye. Thank you very much. And thank you, Terry, Community Development Department. Thank you. Good job. Uh, we'll move to new business item 14 designation of voting delegate and alternate for 2022 League of California Cities Annual Conference. And our introduction is from interim city clerk. Thank you.
Good evening. So the purpose of this item is to select a council member, voting delegate and alternate for the League of California Cities Annual Conference General Business Meeting to be held on September 7th through the 9th in Long Beach, California. The general business meeting is scheduled for Friday, September 9th. Uh, consistent with Cal City's bylaws, each count, city council is required to designate a voting representative and up to two alternates who will be present at the general business meeting, one of whom may vote in the event the designated voting delegate is unable to serve in that capacity. Just a little background, last year's voting delegate was Councilmember Lopez and the alternate was Councilmember Gibbons.
Okay, thank you. Other questions for Stan? Vice Mayor, your, your hand is up. Yeah, on Zoom. Uh, yep. Well, maybe that's, no, you know what that is? That's my hand icon. Take it back. Hey, it's really funny. If you move it over somebody's picture, the icon, the pointer turns into a hand. Okay, sorry about that. It's late. Okay, anybody in the, well, the public hearing, anybody in the public wishing to speak? Seeing none, bring it back to council for discussion or a motion of, um, voting delegate and alternate?
I would like to be one or the other.
Uh, likewise, but having done it last year, if there's, if others who have a preference, I'm, I'm open to changing.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
That's fine. I'm, I just wanted to be sure that we have representation at the, at the league. It's, I, I'd be willing to go if, if there weren't other, um,
Okay.
council members who wanted to attend. So I'm happy to defer.
So, so make a motion as to who is, who is the delegate and who is the alternate? I, I, it looks like, um, fine with whatever we come up with.
So we're going to just have me or are we having?
I will make a motion.
Thank you. Thank you.
I will make a motion that Councilwoman Landry be the prime representative and Councilmember Lopez be the alternate.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Gibbons, second by Vice Mayor Bybee. Can we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Gibbons?
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Councilwoman Landry?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bybee?
Aye.
Mayor Resnikoff?
Aye, thank you very much. That passes. And I think before we move to item 15, we will take a brief 10 or 15 minute break. We've been going, people know it's at 6:30. Take a short break and be back and handle the rest of the items. Thank you. 10 to 15. 10. Ten. Okay. Back for item fifteen under new business, item fifteen is a resolution authorizing issuance of a request for qualifications RFQ for construction management and inspection services. For the Civic Center improvements, Campbell Library renovations, project number twenty-three dash SS, and authorizing the city manager, manager to award consultant services agreement. Introduction is from?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, Todd Capurso, Public Works Department. So I'm here to introduce the, the, um, uh, very generically, the next two items are very similar, understand that we're going to have a recusal in between the two. Uh, but I do want to get you introduced to our, our senior public works project manager tonight, for those of you who haven't, I think you've all met him in one way, shape or form, but he hasn't been out before council before, some of you may not have met him at all. So this, this is Abdullah Ahmed, who'll be up here shortly, and he'll start off the library item by talking about what construction management means in general, and then, then he'll be, he'll be bringing in the specifics to the library project. And my only comment about PD, because I know we will get to that later, that he will not replicate that portion of it again, because he will have given you the overview. And when we get to PD specifics, we will have a recusal in progress, so you may not hear exactly the same.
For clarification, if I can, um, the, the, the bigger process will be the same.
It will be, so we will not.
The framework which it, within how this proceeds will be the same, but you will discuss specifics to the library now and specifics to the police station separately.
Yes, in the, in our effort to be efficient.
Thank you so much. Welcome.
Todd, uh, good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor and council members. Oh, sorry.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, perfect, okay, uh, good evening, everyone, my name is Abdul Ahmed, I'm the new, uh, senior project manager for the City of, uh, Campbell.
And I will be managing both the library and the police department, I mean, the police building project. And just briefly, really, what we're asking tonight is city council, you know, to authorize staff to go out and solicit, um. Qualifications from consultants, you know, to provide construction management and inspection services for both projects. And typically, from my own experience, the last thirty-two years, every major project we, I manage, you know, we always. Asked for, you know, the help of professional, uh, consultants that actually can provide the expertise in the inspection, building inspection. And also in the public works, uh, uh, inspection, but there is also a requirements for a third party. Inspection that's actually in the building code that, you know, we're required to provide that. And they have to certify, you know, that the structural, mechanical plumbing, uh, it's, uh, built per code. So, uh, so we're hoping, you know, by hiring the, you know, the consultant that they will provide, uh, they will be really assisting us, you know, providing daily inspections. Uh, providing us with, uh, a report, you know, showing us the status of, of the project, the progress of the project. And also, uh, making sure that the contractor actually complies, you know, with the specifications and the plans of, uh, of the project. And also, one of the things we're asking here is labor compliance, Department of Industrial Relations, uh, requires that every single contractor and subcontractor to be licensed by the state. And also registered by DIR, uh, they have to upload their certified payrolls, but we also have to make sure that the employees are. You know, the employees of the contractor are, uh, paid the minimum wage, and we, the city, uh, also required to, uh, conduct interviews of the employees. Uh, you know, like taking them on a side and just interviewing, filling, filling out the forms. And of course, the, the forms will be kept, you know, confidential, uh, uh, let's see, um, really, basically. That's what I could, you know, think of, uh, but I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you, other questions for Stan, Councilwoman Landry?
Didn't Liz raise her hand quick enough?
No.
Beat her to the punch here. Hi, Abdullah, again, we have met several times, thank you very much, uh, you've been very nice in listening to my concerns. Uh, so I'm going to start out by saying how important a construction management company really is. They are a separate body than the architect, separate body from the city, they bring in a lot of expertise. And, um, some of the work that's listed in here, I think is in conflict with what the architect was planning to do. So a couple of questions, one is. I was told you're coming in August to ask us to go out to bid, but the CM is not going to be brought on until September. And the first line item of the contract is to review the ninety-five percent construction documents, how can you do that if you're already out to bid?
Okay, I could, let's start with the first question, um, with, uh, um. Revealing actually the plans, the original contract with the architect that the city hired, I think about two years ago, and executed, you know, entered into a contract with them. Um, one of their tasks, I would say ninety percent of their task is to design. And, um, you know, design the plans and then go through the plan check and make sure that, you know, it's approved and it's permitted. But there's the last part of their contract is really to provide the city with any assistance during the construction. For example, if there is a problem or it's somehow in need, requires, um. Explanation by the architect, the designer, the designer is the only one who really can clarify, um, you know, to the contractor, um, you know, it's. You know, to the contractor, you know, it's like, okay, if there's any discrepancies, they can do that because they are the owner of the plans and the records. So really, that's the purpose of their. Help in the, you know, in during the the construction. Now, the project, the construction manager and the inspector, their job is really is to comply, making sure that the contract complies to whatever we design. Now, having the the designer also provide. The construction management and inspection really technically, that's kind of like a conflict of interest. Because if there are any problems with the design. I'm not saying that they will do that, but they will try to cover, you know, their mistakes. So we need to have two sides really bring balance to to the project. And one, one last thing is. Their contract with us, the designers, it's based on time and material. It's not a lump sum. So when we need them, they come out, they look at the problem, resolve it, issue, you know, a revised plans, we'll give it to the contractor and they build the, you know. You know, the job, but if there's no need for them during the constructions, then we will not ask, you know, for their help.
Okay.
That's kind of, you know, clarified. The second. Question is, now we're going out to bid or requesting city council, you know, to authorize staff to go out to bid. And that's somehow it's prior to the award of the construction management and inspection. I want to clarify that whatever schedule we have really, it's tentative. You know, because nature of construction, any project management, really, it depends on, you know, the if the plans are complete or not yet. So we are proposing, you know, to hopefully in the next two months, we will go out, not in August. But in the next two months, hopefully, we'll go out and solicit bids. Prior to that, hopefully, that we will have a consultant, you know, a project man, I mean, management and inspection. Consultant onboard, you know, helping us with constructability review.
Okay, I just want to make sure. The construction management company gives a very valuable. Input in value engineering, and I don't want us to come in August to go out to bid. And then the guy gets brought on in September to do value engineering and we find out we could have saved a million dollars, but we've already gotten bids. So that's just for clarification. Okay, I'm supposed to ask questions.
And if I may add, just for clarifications, okay. We're talking about constructibility review, not value engineering. So those are two important things or two separate items, really. Value engineering usually happens after we open bids and we receive. The bids from, you know, the contractors, and if we realize that the price is higher than what we have budget. That, you know, then we meet with the contractor, you know, and our designer and try to do do a value engineering. Now, value engineering, actually, the process, it's approved by Caltrans and also the Federal Highway Administration. So there is a process that we have to go through. Now, constructability, that's actually, it's crucial, you know, before we go out to bid, making sure that it can be built. According to plans and also within schedule and within budget.
I just want to make clear that. We don't go out to bid before we do all these great things with the CM. Okay. Okay, questions. So I think you answered it. So there's a lot of things in the scope. That almost sound redundant to what the architect is doing. One is record drawings. So typically, the contractor does as built, marks it up by pencil or red pen. Gives it to the architect to do the record drawings. And then here you're saying the construction manager is doing the record drawings. So is the architect?
Correct. Not totally. Just leave, you know, clarify. The architect, the designer that we hire, that actually, you know, is doing the design. Their job is to deliver a permitted construction plans for us to go out and build. The inspector, the full-time inspector, actually will document any changes in the field. If we have any change orders, for example, we approve and we make changes. He, she keeps records of all of that changes. At the end of the project, once we can complete the project and accept the project, we take. All these changes that were reviewed by the inspector, the project manager, and also went. Through or went to the city council to approve the change orders. We give that to the designer. And the designer will make those corrections so he can or she can create an asphalt plant. Technically, really legally, it's called record drawn.
Right, but it says in here, the construction manager would be preparing the record drawings, but it's the architect who should be preparing the record drawings. Because they're modifying their drawings.
Well, yeah, I mean. If you have, you know, the the construction manager, when he prepares, he, she, you know, meets with the contractor. So it's just a red lining. It's not an actual asphalt plant. That information is given to the designer. So there's a two difference.
I'm just going by what it says in here. So that needs clarification on who's doing the record drawings. Okay, and then. On page six of the request for qualifications, bullet two, it says confer with the city to determine inspection standards. That will be applied during construction. I would think that inspection standards would be determined before you go out to bid. So the contractor knows what to expect from the inspection standards. Is that?
Yeah, it could happen before or, you know, during construction, but technically, really, we have so many different agencies. For example, we have, I think, West Valley Sanitation Districts, that they have their own standards. Our inspector, construction management, you know, will work with them to make sure that, you know, the contractor builds everything according to their standards.
Okay, I just want to make clear. We got two things. We're going to have a contractor and a construction manager.
Correct.
So to me, if you go out to get a contractor and you say, oh, it's not been determined yet what the inspection standards are. So that I just want a clarification of that the inspection standards would would be determined before we go out to bid. Okay, and then you mentioned about value engineering and you said it's in the Caltrans standards.
And federal highway.
Okay, but under bullet. Six, it says, ensure contractor complies with local, state and federal, but then it does specifically says Cal OSHA. Why doesn't it specific say city standards and Caltrans? Shouldn't it say that in there?
Well, what actually, I guess maybe I should clarify when I was saying the Federal Highway Administration and also Caltrans. What I was referring to that it's authorized. So there's a legal authorization that gives the city municipal governments. You know, to use value engineering, but we actually can determine follow the the standards. And, you know, with the value engineering.
Okay, I'm just curious why that's not listed here is why is Caltrans not shown? Okay, I'm trying to still answer. I'm still trying to ask questions here. Okay, so I think you kind of answered my question about the value engineering. I'm still concerned and I haven't read the Caltrans clause lately, but. Are we allowed to change the bid item? Through value engineering after it's been awarded? How do you? How do you not get a protest from the second low bidder on that?
Because it's authorized. So we have a precedence. We have a. Public contract code, you know, we have the state of California and the federal administration allows us to, you know, do a value engineering. And. So we have the law behind this, you know, permitting, allowing us to do, you know, the value engineering.
Is the value engineering for price or for material?
Actually, it's for both. It's what the end result, it's the quality, it's what we want to achieve, but. Hopefully with a cost-effective way.
Okay, I think you need to stand by the mic because it's all recorded, just FYI. Okay. One of the bullets say that the construction managers to coordinate with staff, clients, designers, contractors and the public. Isn't that your role? To coordinate with the public?
Let's clarify one thing here. Nothing in that within the project, both projects. Can happen, take place without my. Review or let's say supervision and also without my director's. Approval and also without the city manager's approval. So there is a process that we have to follow. And the inspector and the construction management company, they take directions from me. I take mine from my director.
Right, but it just says the construction manager will deal with the public. I don't think that we want them, we want you or Todd or internal staff to deal with the public.
Well. Yes, I guess it's, you know, we could clarify that, but the inspector or the construction manager, actually, when I'm not out. With him in the field, he is out there, you know, twenty-four seven, let's say, and deals with the with the public. So if someone shows up and has a question, that person will direct him to me.
Okay, I think I get that one. Is the architect reviewing submittals or is the construction manager?
Definitely the architect through our construction manager or the inspector.
Okay, because it says the construction manager is to review submittals for compliance with the construction documents. Isn't that the architect's role?
Working with the architect.
Okay, it's missing. It doesn't say that in here.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so that goes back to my as built versus record drawings versus architect versus CM. And then. Verification of the punch list correction. So is the architect preparing the punch list or is the construction manager?
It's actually the inspector. Who works with the contractor because he, she is present at the job site. Really, really, most of the time, the construction manager. I mean, from the consultant, you know, shows up when there's a need for that person.
Okay, so the really, the architect is not, when we had interviewed the architect and we went through their contract. They were told, I was told by them that they had X number of weeks that they would get paid for. But what I've talked to the city manager, he said, no, they're kind of on call. So the fact that.
And that's why we have the hourly rates for the consultant. So we pay them by the hourly rate, not by just being there or by a lump sum or a percentage.
Okay, so stuff like the punch list then would be, we're not paying extra to the architect to do the punch list. We are doing that with the our inspection, our construction manager and you.
But we have to still provide that information to the architect to make sure that. You know, the submittals are per what they designed.
Right, okay.
And we and we pay them, of course, because there is actually. What do you call it? Part of their proposal, there's an amount.
I'm worried about liability and take the architect's drawings and you change them and who's liable. So that's why I'm asking a lot of these questions. So I think that covers them. I may find one more I missed, but that's my questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Gibbons.
Hi, thank you. Nice to say hello to you in my screen. You're completely dark. So I see a white head moving, but that's about it. I appreciate all the work that you've tried to put into this and I'm also, as you and I have met and discussed with the city manager. A very full plate walking into the project at the phase you came in. So my questions, which I did discuss with the city manager on Friday and did submit in writing this morning, you gave me some responses, which I appreciate. I'm going to say that my comments are not unlike what Councilwoman Landry just went over with you. I'm concerned about my role as a fiduciary responsible for protecting the. Finances of the bond measure and for the residents. And some terms Councilwoman Landry mentioned were responsibility and liability. So from my, these are why I'm asking the questions that I'm asking. You're talking about process. You're talking here about listing an RFQ. Yet you have all the information in there for an RFP. It actually is a request for qualifications. Versus a request for proposal and you're actually asking for a request for proposal. Why are you doing that? Why are you requesting? A request for calls and and yet you are doing a request for with proposals? And how are you making the decisions? About that? Can you explain what the difference is between an RFQ and an RFP and why you're doing things the way you're doing?
Absolutely. For the the request for qualifications. It's in the, I think it's in the government code. I could be wrong, but that states clearly. That qualifications or a proposal from a consultant, a professional services company. The evaluation of their proposal cannot be based on the price. It has to be based on their their qualifications and.
Respect, we're talking about that. Sorry, I don't mean to apologize to interrupt. I understand the need to have a, which you do in this, which is why I'm confused. You're putting their fee proposal in a sealed envelope. I understand that.
That's what I was trying to get say after that, yeah.
Okay.
That's a difference between a request for qualifications versus a request for proposal. And in our. Document, we're asking for requests for qualifications, not proposal.
You're asking for a proposal and a fee proposal and a sealed envelope and you're saying.
Part of the request for qualifications, once it's in a sealed envelope, then it's a request for proposal. Once it's open and we, when we receive the proposals and if there is a price, then it's not a request for qualification. That's a difference.
Okay, I'll I'll say back to you what I think is the difference I'm hearing. And I'm trying to be quick with these questions on the benefit of everyone. I will do my best to do so. What the reason I asked the question is I'm trying to understand. When you responded to my earlier question, it is your intent. To use the information you receive back in the request for qualifications, which does include a fee proposal. And it is your intent to. Open the the fee proposal and negotiate a scope of work. At that time with the CM.
No, our plan is we evaluate all of the the qualifications of the consultants and the one that we think can provide the best service to us. Then we will open the envelope, you know, where it shows their prices. We try to negotiate, not the scope of work, but to negotiate their prices. And if they propose that they actually need to work eighty hours or maybe two hundred hours, we will ask for their justifications and really, do we need two hundred hours uh for the inspection? Um, you know, if we disagree, then we go to the next uh consultant and we go through the same process.
Without looking at the fee proposal?
The second time, yes. And then, once we are satisfied with their qualifications, then we open the proposals and ask them to justify, you know, um, the reason uh they came up with that number or.
So I want to be brief with our questions and answers if we can be um, Abdullah. Um, my, my question is that is the scope of work that's provided in your RFQ sufficient to get apples to apples bid responses? And I have significant questions and concerns, such as what Councilwoman Landry has raised, but many more, on how you can evaluate an RFQ um with with this a scope of work that, when I say, isn't complete or is confusing. Um, I'm trying, I'm trying to ask a question here, so that's where I'm going, I I'm I'm confused by what's in the documents. Let me try a different question, um. The time I, for the construction of of the uh library, are you considering that project to be a lump sum or a time and materials contract, construction contract?
Uh, the construction, we haven't actually reached that point, but technically in from my own past experience, it's a lump sum, but we haven't decided on that yet.
Okay, and your cost estimate to date has been based on the CSI form- format?
Or based actually on what the consultant uh provided us.
Which is in the CSI format, construction specifications institute format? So, um, and are you expecting to get your bid documents back in that format?
Um, yes, for the time being.
So what I'm looking for is to understand these questions because I'm looking to clarify what the role of the construction manager versus the architect um is, similar to what Councilwoman Landry was. Um, Councilwoman Landry brought up a significant point, which is if the construction manager takes over the control of the drawings, then the is, what do you, how do you feel the cities, what do you feel the city's risk is for responsibility and liability if the CM takes over the architect's work?
Let's see. Let me, let me jump in just a little bit and help, I I don't think that we're suggesting that the project uh construction manager is going to do the work of the architect, we're trying to talk about the coordination between the two, they're symbiotic.
That's exactly.
There's roles for both of them, but I don't imagine that that we envision the construction manager to replace the services of the architect with respect to the record drawings.
I'm talking, I'm talking about, thank you for the clarification, um, I'm, I believe that if you read the scope of work that is in the document, you will find that there is language, as Councilwoman Landry uh noted, that is in conflict with what um the architect's role and responsibility is. And in my, in the response that I received this afternoon, it recommended that I go back and take a look at the contract for Jason Architects, um, which I did. And um, um, let's see, I'm trying to ask a question here. The discrepancy that I'm finding is, um, if you can help me understand why there is this discrepancy. Um, it says, if the lowest responded responsible bid for the base scope of the contract documents exceeds the construction budget by more than five percent, the design consultant shall assist the city to value engineer the CDs to incorporate necessary cost-saving measures and obtain the necessary approvals from the city and stakeholders for rebid. Value engineering, if needed, shall be conditioned as part of the consultant's base scope of work at no additional cost to the city, that's under their task H. And so I don't understand how your scope of work has the construction manager value engineering the project when it's coming in over budget, when it's specifically in the contract scope of Jason Architects.
Okay, um, let me clarify again, um. There's a difference in role and responsibilities and there is no liabilities. Based on my experience in thirty-two years managing close to three hundred million dollars of municipal buildings, uh worked for the city of Irvine, built six lead certified community centers. In city of Alameda, we built a brand new four-story library and we followed the same standards that allowed permitted in the state of California. So going back to the role of the construction manager and the inspector, they collect all of that information, they make sure that their work is done per the permitted approved signed set of plans and specifications. And all that changes has to go to the record um to the architect who prepared and signed the documents, the plans. They make, they prepare the changes, the as of plans or the record uh drawings, you know, that goes back to uh the city. So really, both sides help each other or work together and they are not taking the response or the liability, you know, uh from each other. So everyone's liable for their own work.
With with respect, um, I do not believe that's what the document that you've provided us to review tonight actually says. Um, it it makes the construction manager responsible. So I'm I'm just looking at the, you you had, you had said a few minutes ago that the architect has minimum services during the construction, what we call it, construction administrative support and it's on a time and material basis.
Right.
In their proposal, they have a very detailed breakout by discipline for services during construction administration for three hundred and thirty-two thousand, four hundred and forty-nine dollars. Um, there's nothing in this that says that that is a T and M. And so, and under their task I, there's very specific tasks that they have to do as construction administrative stration support. So there seems to be a disconnect between what you have expressed as your understanding of what the architect's role is versus what their contract says. And that appears in to be in conflict with what you're saying um in the um uh scope for the construction manager. So tha- that's where I'm, what I'm saying that I'm confused, can you help me understand what that, why there's such a discrepancy?
Uh, I don't see any discrepancies with all due respect. Uh, I stand by my professional uh opinion and judgment. Uh, just for your information, Councilmember Liz, the request for qualifications, it's actually a copy, almost a copy. We used the same information that the city of Los Altos used to hire their construction management team and they built a thirty-eight million dollar community center was accepted by the city of Los Altos and that was accepted last year, October, I think, or maybe November of two thousand twenty-one.
So, um, yeah, uh, no, I, uh, so as you, as you and I have discussed, um, and I appreciate, we've had several conversations about your experience and your background and I appreciate um the value that all of that experience has brought to what we're doing here in Campbell. Um, but as I have said to you and I, as I have made in the public record, um, I'm also one of in the profession and I have more than forty years of experience and done hundreds of millions of dollars in projects. So I'm not challenging your expertise, I'm trying to understand why there seem to be these discrepancies between these documents. Um, so, um, I, um, and I just am looking at what you asked me to look at, so, um. The um question is, um, for example, you're talking about um a critical path schedule CPM. And it wasn't clear to me whether your CM was providing it or whether your contractor was was providing it.
Again, they are gonna work together to create that. So really, nothing comes out of really vacuum, you know? So the CM works with a contractor, the contractor works with the CM to come up with a schedule that is feasible, practical and can be done and deliver the project.
Okay, well, with respect, the contractor is responsible for building the project on time and on budget. It is not the construction manager's responsibility to help develop or work with a contractor to review and comment and accept um the schedule, um, yes, but not to work with the contractor. It's the contractor's legal responsibility. And this is, I understand you've been pretty consistent with the need to work together as a team with the construction manager and the architect, the construction manager and the contractor. That, of course, is the ideal working relationship. But what I'm trying to understand, um, and I have, don't yet, is that there are legal responsibilities that one group cannot assume from another. And I I'm, I'm not, I'm not helped finding that. Um, I would just offer, you've said um that the project can have value engineering a- after the bids have come in. Uh, with respect, I don't understand how that's possible. Um, particularly given that the city of Campbell had a recent example of going out to bid for Campbell Park. It came in substantively over the budget. Um, the staff came back recommending um rejection of the bid and going out to bid with a new set of drawings with value engineering incorporated in it. So to me, that's the appropriate process. Council decided not to do that, the council decided to accept the um the bid. But we're, the city's been consistent with not putting out a situation where a contractor would bid. And then we would change the scope um with one bidder where another bidder could challenge that.
Can we keep the questions at this point or?
I'm trying, I'm sorry.
I know, I know. Sure, yeah.
Yeah, I I, so I'm, I don't understand how you can say that, given, given the recent example of in the city, how is it that now we can um change the bid documents and negotiate a different price on a set of bid documents that would competitively bid?
The only answer I can provide you is this. If we, we have professional staff and consultants who are licensed by the state and are protected by the government code eight hundred thirty point six, we have a design immunity. My fear is the minute upper management gets involved in professional technical, you know, um, design uh process, then the city will be liable. You know, if we follow that, we're supposed to, you know, follow what the standards are, the design, the constructions in the state of California, and we are supposed to follow that.
Oh, and my concern um is that we are not following it and I agree we should be. Um, all right, I have other questions and concerns, basically. I do not see a consistency, never mind, that's a comment, all right.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Lopez.
Yeah, just, just a quick clarification, um, uh, thank you for for um uh for for being here tonight. Um, the question of legal liability came up, what I heard is that people will be responsible for their own work that they produce, is that correct?
Their professional work, yes.
Right, okay, that's it, thank you.
No other questions, thank you, we're gonna open this to public, are any uh people in the public wishing to comment? See, nobody here. And we realize you bring it back to council for discussion. Councilwoman Landry?
Yes, thank you. You came into a project that was midstream and you picked it up, you grabbed it, you embraced it, you've moved forward. We've made a lot of progress and I want to thank you for that. Um, I am concerned, though, that there is some inconsistencies in the scope of work. So based on, oh, sorry. Based on some of the comments I made, like who's preparing the as the record drawings? Because it says in here that the construction manager is preparing the record drawings. That takes away the liability and responsibility from the architect and it's uh on page one thirty-eight, the fifth bullet from the bottom, so for me to feel comfortable approving this, both PD and library, I would hope you could go back and look at the scope of services a little more with a fine tooth comb. Um, clarify some of this language, nowhere in here does it say anything about coordinating with the architect. And so, um, to me, that should be in a couple of these sentences at least of who is, who are you coordinating with? Who's preparing the technical record drawings, which is there for posterity? Um, who's meeting with the public? This whole thing of this Caltrans value engineering, I've never heard that you were able to take the bid and cut the price down later because you could have the second low bidder could protest that, hey, if you had given me that that chance to value engineering, I could have got my bid lower and if we could save a million dollars, I'd like to know when the bid opened before because we may not get it completely later. So clarification of who's preparing record drawings, clarification of the standards to be made, coordinating with the architect and the inspection standards of clarifying that prior to going out to bid and then making sure that this construction management firm is on board, ready to go, they looked at the drawings, they value engineered and then you come to council to go out to bid. Because that's really, to me, the very beginning of this construction manager's benefit is this value engineering that they could do before we go out to bid and we, Liz mentioned the uh playground over at Campbell Park, they were seven, eight hundred thousand dollars over a one-point-six-million-dollar budget. And staff came back and said, okay, we're going to value engineering and go out to bid a second time. So if we could have done it through this Caltrans provision, then why didn't we do it on that one? So to me, that kind of set the standard of what we can do here. Um, so I'm I'm concerned about those kinds of things and I don't know how else to just, can can we go back and just really clean up some of the language in here before we issue this?
Okay, thank you, Ca- Councilmember Gibbons.
Um, trying to summarize the the main points that I. Trying to summarize the, the main points that I have is construction management is a critical component of having a successful project at the library. Absolutely, um, essential and they they provide, um, great services. And I know that that's what, um, the project manager is trying to achieve, is getting the right support for himself and the projects to achieve, um, a project that's in compliance with the design documents. No, no question about everyone wanting the same end result. The challenge for me is, in this particular document that's been prepared, sorry, is that there is a liability and responsibility issue. It has, have to be very, very clear, um, on who is ultimately responsible for what. And within that, you can have very good working relationships, but it has to have a clear contractual legal responsibility. And it says here, for example, in the contract scope for Jason Architects. As applicable and not limited to, the architect shall deliver construction progress reports, respond to RFIs and substitution requests, review of submittals, design and engineering bulletins, design change orders and substantial completion punch lists. And it goes on, there's a lot of detail in this contract scope that appears to be in conflict with what my reading and I think Councilwoman Landry's and others reading of what, um, the CM is supposed to do. It's just simply not clear who's the lead, who's the decision maker. I had suggested that a matrix of who's doing what um, and who's the final authority would really help clarify the main, um, responsibilities. So again, I am not looking into the weeds. I am looking at a comp, an understanding of a RFQ that to me, um, would not read well in the, um, public sector bidding. And a particular concern is, one, the timing of the review of the CM of the drawings that as far as I understood were ninety five to a hundred percent complete in last November or December. So if they have comments and changes, is that going to require Jason Architects to make changes? And that will be a, uh, change order to the city for additional services, that's the question there. I don't understand, um, how to, let's see, what am I trying to say? The responsibility of, um, the drawings is that of the architect. If someone else makes the decision, then the architect's liability disappears. And I appreciate Councilmember Lopez's question, but the question is a little more nuanced. Because the way it's written in the document, the RFQ, it says it's the construction managers that, that's responsible, not the, the architect, which it should be. So I I'm trying, oversimplified, it's the risk of responsibility, it's the risk of change, cost to the city not to have a clear construction, um, management scope of work. And I understand perfectly the, the project at, in Los Altos, I've been to the building, it's a marvelous building. But we don't, I don't know, maybe you do, but I don't know what their contract with their architect said. Don't know what their contract with their construction manage, uh, construction company said. There's too many pieces, it's, it's, it might be a good document for what it was where it was. But for us and our material and our scope of work, um, to me, this, it, it needs, as Councilwoman Landry said, it needs a really hard coordination, double check to make it clear who's responsible, um, for what. I, I'm fine with going out for an RFQ.
You're on mute, Liz.
You're muted.
All right, thank you. I can't understand, I, I cannot go along with, um, change orders or, or value engineering after bids have been received and then renegotiating a bid, a bid document. And I guess what I'm, I would offer is that a, a building is not a highway, it's not a road. It's a very different kind of project. And I don't, I'm not familiar with the references that, um, the project manager has referenced, I don't know them. But it, it makes no sense to me that, given city policies in the past, why we would allow that.
Can you clarify, Councilmember, you, you, you got cut off in the middle, so you made a comment, I'm not against going to RFQ. You went mute, then you came back and, and essentially indicated you wouldn't support it, so.
So, um, I am totally supportive of having a construction manager, totally supportive of having an RFQ. I think the process is a little strange, but to some extent, that's the way, um, the project manager wants to run it. But there are specific components in the document that conflict with the scope and responsibilities of the architectural design team. Um, and I believe significant risk to the city by having, um, allowing value engineering if the bids come in over, um, with, um. Uh, I don't believe that's consistent with city policy on bidding.
Let me, just to clarify, so I understand, you're, you're supportive of an RFQ, but not this RFQ as written?
No, it's, yeah, thank you, it needs to be, uh, reviewed and coordinated with the responsibilities of others, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lopez?
Thank you, um, I appreciate the discussion, especially getting specific, um, about, first off, do you want to start by saying thank you for, um, your, your, your work and leadership that they're bringing this project? I, you know, I appreciate some of the, the specific suggestions. There, there are a couple of times when you, uh, you know, and answering some of that where, where you made a comment to the effect of, um, you know, we could clarify that, um, we, we could address that. So to the extent that that is possible, I would be supportive where we have specific instances that, that were brought up and where it's, it's in line, um, with, with the, the vision for, for, for the project and, and the needs. Um, but I, I would hesitate to say scrap this and let's br- bring back, uh, a, a later RFQ for, for discussion. So, um, I, I guess I'm really looking to hear, and, and, and maybe this is after we've all had a chance to comment, but to hear from staff on what we, we could do wi- within that process, still be able to move forward, uh, tonight. And, and I'd, I'd love, uh, maybe the Public Works Director to address, um, some of the questions that have come up around change orders, around previous issues we, we've had, um, city policy, I, I just love a little bit more context there. But I will, I, I would like to find a constructive way to, to try to move forward.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, any comments?
I, I would concur with that.
I'll make a comment too, I, I mean, I, I, I don't disagree with what you've said. I mean, I'll, I'll go in the statement. I don't have the background to, to parse this down to the level of an architect, I just don't. I have faith in staff, I have faith in a project manager, and I think we're, we're getting into great detail that, that, on something they can manage. That, that being said, have a very, um, big concern here, the, the RFQ leads to a consultant that leads to some output. And if people are not bu- uh, buying into the process of the RFQ, they're not going to buy into the ultimate consultant that gets hired, they're not going to buy into the ultimate output. And we could find ourselves four, five, six months down the road rejecting all that output and starting over, not only losing six months in the project, but probably spending, help me, fifty to a hundred thousand dollars to get there. That worries me, I mean, normally I'm not one to say that everything should be unanimous. In general, we, we live on rule of majority and three. That being said, if the project is going to be impacted down the road to the extent of that amount of money and worth that, that loss of time, I'm inclined to say, until we have everybody comfortable in this, a, a month delay into August is a lot better than a six month delay and a, and a, and a restart. And I, and I, you know, I, that, that being said, like I say, I, I don't have the issues that some others have. And I'm not questioning the staff at all. But I'm having a real hard time, I'm scared to move forward to something that is almost a, a, a design disaster because we're not accepting it today, why would we accept it in six months? So, um, I'm interested in hearing other comments, but, um, I'm, I'm totally for moving the project forward, totally for getting a library done. But I'm scared to move forward with it, given all the comments today, there's zero buy-in, not from everyone, not, maybe not even from a majority. But this is a voter mandated project that needs to move forward. And when forty percent of the people have serious problems with it, 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 um, foretells a lot of problems down the road. So that, that's where I'm staying now, I'm very, I'm very worried about moving forward with something that, that I think we could move forward with, would work moving forward with, and I want to move forward with, but I think it may be a bad choice at this point to do so.
I think, yeah.
I, I was just gonna ask for clarification too, because there's, there seems to be some confusion about the RFQ process versus the bid process. And, and I've heard, um, the Campbell Park project as an example, but it, it's, you can't compare apples to, to apples, because that was a, a bidding process. This is an RFQ where you determine qualifications and then the, um, financials are disclosed. And it allows for negotiations, and so I don't, I, I, I can't understand where, what the, um, discrepancy is in, or, or the misunderstanding is in, in the process.
May I offer clarification?
I prefer, um, the project manager or, or the Public Works Director to respond to that.
Director Caperso?
I, I'll just offer that the, the question is not reflective of what I said, that's what I just wanted to offer.
Yeah, I believe Councilmember Gibbons is, is, is correct. I believe your reference was to the actual bids that we would receive on the library and PD and trying to value engineer those cost-driven bids after the fact. So I agree that there would be some concern with, with that approach that we would have to discuss offline. So I, I'm understanding you, your concern, I don't know which screen to look at you on, but I know you're out there somewhere, um. This is, this is, this is very difficult. So I mean, I, I will say that this is the project that we all want to see move forward, there's, there's no doubt about it. And we, we want absolute clarity to the greatest extent possible. And I think what drives us all a little bit nuts on this one is the fact that we don't typically use construction management firms, right? We typically do, as Councilmember Gibbons said, we do a lot of road and street and park projects that are of a sufficient scale that city staff fulfills that construction management role. So we've got an inspector, we've got a typically a project manager that can really fulfill those roles because they are really working directly with, with the contractor. This, these two projects are, uh, significantly larger. And in, maybe in a larger organization, you would assign an inspector or a project engineer to basically live on those sites over the duration of construction. And we don't have that, that, uh, that staffing model here, obviously, we're, we're, we're smaller scale. And so that's one of the driving forces, why we would seek outside services for construction management. Because, you know, as I said, as I'm alluding to, in, in some cities, this would, this would be a staff function and the staff would, would negotiate that. And so I think a lot of the confusion here is trying to take, I don't know whether it's confusion, but the lack of clarity is trying to identify those issues that a, um, uh, that a construction manager would do that are different from either the contractor or from the design team. And obviously, we've left enough, um, I guess there's enough, um, I don't want to say, I, again, I don't want to say confusion, but it's not clear enough for, for several of you where those roles and responsibilities are. And I, so I do think that we need to fix that. I think we can fix that. I, I, I don't necessarily like the thought of losing another four weeks because the next council meeting is four weeks from tonight and I think we could be back in, in red and be, be ready for that. Uh, and I think we need to clear up some of those issues and, and I think we can. Now, I don't know that we will clear them all up, but I think we can certainly address things like, uh, record drawings and redlining and who's taking, who owns that and who's gonna, who's gonna put those together to the end product. And, 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 and we can do those. One thing that's, that's a little different on this, it, because it's an RFQ. This is not like, you've seen us come to you before for RFPs, usually for design services, where we know we want to hire a design firm, we want you to design a park for us. You know, we kind of can put some parameters about this. Things like construction management, and we've been to you before on things like, uh, um, things like, uh, labor compliance services and surveying services. You can't necessarily draw a box around everything that you want. You kind of know the service that you want, but the project, to some extent, will drive the amount of resources that you need to pull from that service provider. And so that's why, even though we are going to get cost proposals from these, from these, uh, firms that will make us proposals, there's going to be some float in that, that's why you take hourly rates in that as well. Because if you find that there are delays in construction that are, that are really not attributable to anybody, you've got to keep your construction management firm online. And maybe it's no fault of theirs, but construction might take twenty four months instead of eighteen months. And that's why we're not looking for a, a complete proposal that you hold somebody to because it's, it's kind of nebulous in, in that regard. And so I think we can take those comments, uh, that we've heard, we can come back to you in, in, in a few weeks. And, uh, hopefully, we will address the vast majority of those. But I, at this point, um, I, I don't necessarily like, you know, recommending that, that, that we come back. But I don't like moving forward, um, on, on a portion of the, on an effort, that's a portion of this project where there isn't, you know, I don't necessarily want to say, um, unanimous agreement, but it's, it's, it's kind of in the middle. I mean, I think there were two people that, that maybe think this is okay and two people that not. And, you know, and so if there are any, 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 if there is any room for doubt in there, you know, or may- maybe we should take the opportunity to clarify that as much as possible.
Thank you very much, Todd, very clear, very to point, thank you. I want to move forward, but I want to move forward so that we don't take ten, ten steps back later. And I don't want a challenge to the low bid. If we get a challenge by the second bidder, we could drag out for several months, they could take us to court. And I don't want that to happen. I'm very concerned about this whole value engineering after the bid opens. I'm concerned that we're going to come to me, us, not me, in August, that you come to us and say, we're ready to go out to bid. But oh, by the way, our construction manager isn't on for another three weeks and then we're going to value engineer. We're going to drag time, we're going to end up with challenges, that's my concern. I think you've heard kind of some of my nitpicky, who's doing the record drawings? Where's the architect in here? We do have a contract with the architect that had a scope of services because I remember we gave him an extra seventy five thousand dollars. So they already have an expectation. To me, it sounds like it's hourly, but they have already been given a fee for a scope of work. So it is not really truly hourly, because I even asked him, how many weeks are you engaged? And he said, X number of weeks. I said, what happens if a cha- a change order has a time delay? That's extra from them. So they kind of have a sense of what their scope. I want to move forward tonight, I don't want you to come back in a month, that's a waste of time. I just, again, don't come to us with the bid recommendation until the CM's on board. It sounds like it's going to be very close, you, you're bringing them in in the early September, hopefully it'll be sooner. Clean up some of the language before the RFQ goes out. And then I'm fine, Paul, to your concern, then I'm fine that you know what, what I've been, and I think Liz has been citing the same concerns. So what we could say tonight is, yes, go out with an RFQ, get the bid in the sealed envelope, which is the proposal, but it's an hourly, it's a, you know, you're going to negotiate that later. Then I'm ready to move forward. So if that helps you, Paul, in what, what you're saying, I just, I, it's, we have a fiduciary responsibility. And someone had said to me once, what would we do if? what would we do if you weren't there? And I say, thank God I am here because I do have enough to say, what about this? What about that? Let's be perfect as we move forward. And that's all I'm trying to do. And I don't want someone to come back to me next year and say, you didn't warn us this could drag out for six months because we had a bid protest. So I think I've said enough, but I want to move forward. I don't want to delay. I want a PD to move forward. And those are my things that I would accept if we move forward.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
The concern I have is that we all need to be comfortable with what is going forward. And if the majority is supportive of the library project, we will have a problem if if we're not all supportive of the PD project when that comes to us. Because it's a it's a a four member council that's discussing that. So I feel that we really need to be supportive of both projects. And and if we're going to go out to bid on one or issue an RFQ on one, we need to be consistent with the second one because both projects need to move forward.
Thank you. I see I see your hand up. Cause we're going to give one second. So I answer your to your question, Councilwoman Landry. It's similar. It's similar to what the Vice Mayor said. We can, I believe we could, we could have a three, two or a four, one vote tonight. We can. But I too want to make sure that everybody's moving forward, invested in moving forward. And I think that's what you said you were. You understand my my trepidation here. I'll vote no on a project I want to move forward because otherwise, if everybody voting for it's just doing it for, you know, show and then doesn't really support the efforts coming out, it's going to blow up in her face. Right? It doesn't have to, but it but it could. So given your, I mean, given your comments, I take them at face value that you're invested in moving forward and 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 seeing certain changes and all that. I'll be supportive, but I but you understand where I'm coming from before. I'll vote against my own best interest in a way, just to say, let's not do this and let's not come back in ninety days and and just, well, we don't really like this and let's start over. And it's just not right.
And we haven't heard from Liz.
I want to get back to Councilmember Gibbons.
Yeah, I just.
Yeah.
To close what you just said, I want to move forward, but I want to move forward in the right direction. And I don't want to get bogged down three months from now with a bid protest at a twenty million dollar project that could drag out, that could potentially go to court if you have a bid protest. And I don't think we want to see that. And I give a lot of value to the fact that Abdullah jumped into the middle of this, that he brings a tremendous amount of experience. I've sat down, we've talked, we've shared. I know where you're coming from, from your experience. I'm not doubting that, but we're the last dot in your i's and cross in your t's. And that's all that I really want to do. And I think you've heard, especially if you've heard from me, what I would like to see. And Todd, you've acknowledged that we all want to move forward. Paul has also. So as long as those things can be incorporated, then I would vote to continue to move forward.
Let me go to Councilmember Gibbons. You're I know your hand is up and is late.
Well, what it's, what is it? One thirty in the morning, two o'clock in the morning, whatever. So I I think I said earlier, as as all of you have said, Abdullah, the project manager, walked into what he walked into. And I know he has a massive task. And he and I met with Brian several months ago discussing the massive task that was in front of him. And I appreciate all the the value and experience he's bringing to what he's putting before us. I do think he's struggling with the amount of work he has. Frankly, it just, it just seems over. I said to him at the time, I don't know how you're going to do it. And I'm not trying to be at all critical. I am trying to take a step back and look at what seems to be inconsistent within the document and then within the document and other relevant documents. And I would just, I mean, I I I want to move forward in the worst possible way because that's the right thing to do. I'm I my gut is telling me that it's not worth the risk right now. I mean, Abdullah was talking about the scope of work for the architect and their scope of work for construction administration and their fees, which is not minor, so over three hundred thousand dollars, is very specific during construction. And it's not a T and M. So there's a disconnect there. And I I think I really genuinely believe that we need need construction management, no question, no ifs, ands, or buts. I have no problem with that. I do think it's important to understand that this is a to a building project. It is not a asphalt paving project. And there are differences and there are different skill sets and knowledge and responsibilities. And this is a public bid. And I'm just genuinely concerned about the conflict within the the RFP as it stands, about the risk of who's going to have the ultimate liability for for what's work and the risk of a bid document that has been we could do value engineering after the bids are open. That that is not consistent with with what the city has done in the past. So I I would encourage, as much as I don't want to do this, I I I don't want to do this at all. But the big picture of what we need to do for the best interests of the city, I think this scope of work would benefit from a review of for consistency and completeness and risk liability.
Okay, thank you. So I'll just make one one final comment, I guess. Oh, Councilmember Lopez, why don't you go ahead? I'll speak afterwards.
Okay. I also want to say, Director Capurso, thank you for your leadership, the clarity of the answer. I I agree. I I am glad that, you know, those who have relevant experience are bringing their expertise to the to this project. And I think there's a great value to that. And I'm grateful that they're having their input. And Mayor, I hear what you're saying. I totally get the 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 process. I I guess I'm just nervous because I'm not certain that even were we to wait a month that everybody could could have could be totally satisfied with 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 what comes back. And that makes me nervous because I don't think we can have certainty about that. Vice Mayor, I can agree more strongly with what what you said about the the two projects. I really, really believe that. So I I I guess where I'm still leaning at this point is I would like to find a constructive way to move forward tonight. It sounds like listening, Councilman Landry, which I I appreciate your your feedback. It sounds like there's a way to do that. So that would still be my first preference. I I am keeping an open mind. You know, for about the process, but that that is still my strong inclination.
Mayor, could I make a attempted emotion? Because in that way, that might clarify with us.
Once, let me just say one thing and then, yes. I I would just say that I agree with what you said. My point is this fear of on a very, very important project, you know, funded essentially by the public, that we have to do the right thing. So I'll just I'll just say this, we'll see how this goes. I'm interested in your motion. I'm not joining a three, two vote. If it's a three, two vote, I won't join it because I think that sends a bad message here and we're going to have trouble down the road. That being said, I'll join a four, one vote. And I think and 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 this is a positive comment because I'm trusting in what you said. I mean, that you're invested in this process to move this forward and to move measure O forward with potentially questions, whatever, that's fine. But that's four, one to me stands very, very differently than three, two. And at the end of the day, I'm voting last. I will vote against, like you say, everything I want to do because if we do, if we do a very big split like that, it's going to be a disaster. If we are four, one, I agree. Councilmember Lopez said it, we don't satisfy, we never do, but it but it's a different statement. So I'm trusting in your words. So if that's the way of going, I'll be supportive.
You're making me cry, Paul. I got tears in my eyes. Thank you.
Could I clarify who the mayor was talking to?
I was I was talking, I was I was, I was responding to Councilwoman Landry's well, comment earlier, I think about that she made about supporting it and the way and the reason she would support it. And she had offered to make a motion. I said, just let me make a comment first.
Well, and I think Liz gets credit in this too because she did say that she wants to try to move this forward. And I I just want to make sure that that we're a team and we're here to make this move forward. So let me try a motion.
I respect that there are times when three, two, but a majority involves all that matters. And I don't think this is that.
I don't think so.
This is not one of them, I think. It's unique.
So let me try and make a motion and and I'm going to incorporate some of the wording that Liz used. I make a motion that the city council adopt a resolution authorizing a request for qualifications for construction management and inspection services for the Civic Center Improvements Campbell Library Project twenty-three dash SS with modifications for consistency, coordination with the architect and incorporating the comments that have been made. And then authorizing the city manager to award a consultant service agreement with the most qualified respondent.
And if I can make a comment, that is with the modified desk item resolution. Which added an additional finding.
Yes, with the modified desk item adding to the items of the resolution.
I'll second.
Let me see, a motion by Councilwoman Landry, second by Vice Mayor Bybee. Comment or question?
I just want to make sure that staff is comfortable and feels that that language is clear.
I am fairly clear. I get a little bit murky when we start talking about incorporating the comments. I think what we were trying to address is the coordination issue with the architect and the roles and responsibilities and and any liability issues associated with that. And we'll go ahead and clarify that if that's motions approved. I don't know that there's other comments that we're going to address in there.
But that's fine. I just wanted that clarity.
So you make a friendly amendment.
I I just wanted to clarify what my understanding was when we say council comments as part of the motion.
Thank you. Yeah, as comment, Councilmember Gibbons.
One of the outstanding issues for me is the doing value engineering after the bid. I I think it's city policy and industry norm not to negotiate after a competitive bid.
Can the, do we need to add that to the motion? I think we've made it pretty clear to staff on that issue. And I think the way to do that is you don't go out to bid.
In Brian's summary.
I just, the clarification for me is we don't go out to bid till the CM is on board and may have value engineered it. Then we go out to bid. So I don't know how that is in the motion, but that's my biggest concern. We don't value engineer after a bid opens. That's the challenges that we would get.
But I think with Brian's, tell me if I'm wrong, and Director Capurso, but I think with the city manager's comments, he 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 kind of delineated what 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 you were referring to. And my fear is of trying to, we're not going to answer all the questions now. We could go down a path and but now we got to answer this one, that one, and then we're going back to where we were. So I'm okay with the motion and the second as is. Staff is nodding that they're okay. Director Capurso, do you have comments before we vote?
Yes, I I think I think we are. I just wanted to, again, clarify that that we that we will need to distinguish a little more clearly between what is a constructibility analysis versus value engineering, because I think that's where we're getting hung up. That's what we're getting hung up on.
Okay. So can we have, can Vice Mayor, did you have? Can we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Gibbons.
Regrettably, no.
Councilmember Lopez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Landry.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bybee.
Aye.
Mayor Resnikov.
Aye.
Thank you all very much. That motion passes. We're going to move to item sixteen, but as mentioned earlier, we split this off because I'll recuse from the from the discussions on sixteen and seventeen relating to the police station because of proximity of the parcel to my residence. So at this point, I'll pass the gavel to Vice Mayor Bybee and recuse for rest of night. Thank you.
We have two more items to get through.
Yeah, give me a sec. Give me just a chance to.
For a good reason.
Okay, this is item number sixteen, a resolution authorizing the issuance of a request for qualifications RFQ for construction management and inspection services for the Civic Center Improvements Campbell Police Operations, building project number twenty-three dash RR and authorizing the city manager toward a consultant services agreement. And we have Public Works Director Capurso to present.
Yet again. Thank you, Vice Mayor Bybee. Don't really have much else to say on this one. I I just wanted, I would like to say that we would happily include all of the all of the points from the last discussion into this item as well. And if you have any any more specific questions that maybe we want to go over, we 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 still have Abdullah here. But I I thought I'd give him an extra second to catch up on on his notes there. So that's really all we have. It's essentially a very similar discussion to the previous item.
Thank you. Are there any questions to counsel? Councilmember Gibbons, are you any questions or? Okay, are there any members of the public wishing to speak on this item? Okay, I'll bring it back for a council discussion and or a motion. And we do have a desk item on this.
Same thing about the the resolution. To save my language and trying to figure out how to say it again, Andrea, could you read back the part that I added into the resolution? I mean, to the recommended action, consistency, coordination with the architect.
Point of order, point of order. We're not at a motion yet. We're at discussion.
Okay.
I did ask for public comment. So there's no, I'm sorry, Councilmember Gibbons, do you?
Yes, I did want to have discussion. Thank you very much. So as will come as no surprise, my comments are similar to the previous item. I would encourage coordination and review of the consultants, in this case, LPA's contract scope, which is different than the RFP that staff referenced in my early, in their response to my earlier questions. They had a second comment, contract to complete the design bid drawings. And I am looking for it and I will not find it right now. I appreciate Director Capurso's comment about constructibility versus sorry, versus value engineering. I believe there is language that specifically says value engineer after the bids are opened. And that is one of the significant challenges. And also, any work that the construction manager brings into making changes in the set of documents is a matter of of is that, does that become an additional scope of work for the design team? Because they feel they have already incorporated any and all comments from the city. And then the rest of my other comments also still apply. Thank you.
Not necessarily. I mean, I think we would take a similar approach to the previous item in that, you know, it is a different contract. in that, you know, it is a different contract with LPA than it is with Jason Architecture. So it'll be a slightly different analysis for consistency, because we do have a, we had the initial contract with LPA when we did not know the project delivery method, and then we did an amendment when it was determined that we would go down the more traditional route. So yes, that's a valid point that we will certainly, it'll be a slightly different comparison for consistency and responsibilities in the case of the RFQ for a construction manager for the PD building, it will be against the LPA contract.
Thank you. Any other comments from council members? Councilmember Gibbons, are you okay?
Okay, so Madam interim city clerk, can you read the part that I added? Was consistency, coordination with the architect and corporation of comments, I think?
That's correct, including the desk item.
Oh, and including, okay, so now I'm going to make a motion. I have to make a motion that the city council adopt a resolution authorizing issuance of a request for qualifications for construction management and inspection services for the Civic Center improvements Campbell Police Operations Building, Project Number 23-RR. Incorporating the desk item, looking for consistency, coordination with the architect, and incorporation of comments, and authorize the city manager to award a consultant service agreement with the most qualified respondent.
I'll second.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second to approve the motion.
And just to clarify that the reference to previous comments is the same as on the previous motion.
Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Gibbons?
Upholding my fiduciary responsibility, I regrettably say no.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Councilwoman Landry?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bybee?
Aye.
Thank you. So that takes us to item 17, a resolution authorizing an ad valorem tax levy based on a debt service estimate to be provided to Santa Clara County regarding general obligation bonds for fiscal year 2022-23. And this will be presented by City Manager Brian Levinbaugh.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor and members of the council, it's a pleasure to present this to you. Although this is setting a tax rate that taxes the property owners of the city, I think this message comes to you with a lot of positives to it. And I want to make sure that we cover those both for you and for the members of the public that have been closely following Measure O. As we were just talking about the expenditure side of Measure O, no, there will be another slide here. As we talked about the expenditure side, this is really talking about the revenue side of it and how we support those, and my screen is frozen here, I apologize, it's not. We have to close that and reopen that. This is where we annually go out and ask the voters of the city to support the revenues that's needed to pay the general obligation bonds. As the council's aware, in August of 2020, we sold $20 million with the bonds and collected a $3.1 million premium. In June of this year, we sold another $30 million bonds with $2.4 million in premium to bring us to our $50 million authorization that was approved by the voters. As part of the voter approval, there was a tax rate structure that was proposed. And if I can get my sharing of my screen set, I will show you this chart, but my PowerPoint just froze, so I will get this rerunning here, I apologize. What we're really asking for the council this evening is to consider authorizing a Measure O tax rate of $20 per $100,000, that's a tax rate of 0.0200% of assessed valuation for the fiscal year 22-23. It is a sufficient amount to pay the actual debt service, and all of the funds that are being paid by our taxpayers are going to pay actual debt service. We will help to ensure the tax rate does not exceed the following parameters. What we proposed to the voters originally was an average tax rate of $19 per $100,000 of assessment and a maximum tax rate of $27 per $100,000 assessment. Using the new bond rates that were recently issued and accounting for the premiums that were paid, the estimated tax rate over the life of all Measure O bond issuance is an average of $15 per $100,000 assessment, as compared to the $19 we promised the taxpayers, and a maximum tax rate of $20, $20.16 per $100,000, where we had promised the taxpayers a maximum tax rate of $27.33. So both of those are positive. There is a chart that I would love to show you, if I can get this running. So if I could just take 20-second pause to try to get this chart open, I appreciate your patience.
It's 2:21 in the morning.
I am sorry. And I also did want to recognize while I'm loading this, if there is questions, we do have Katie Dobson of our bond council that is with us this evening, and also Craig Hill from NHL, NHA, who is our financial advisors on this project as well. So they are here available to answer questions as well, and I'm going to see if my share screen now works.
And if I may, I'd like to also recognize Norrie Baum, who's on the call as well.
All right, so probably not the best format presentation here, but I did want to show this slide that shows, what I'm looking at here is the two lines. The dark blue line on the top shows the tax rate that was proposed to the taxpayers at the time the voters approved Measure O. And the teal line, the lighter blue line below, is the tax rate that we are now suggesting over time. You can see where we are, where both of those lines spike in 2023 fiscal year, actually slightly go up in 2023-24, and then they will taper off over time. Both of those bonds will taper off over time. The key thing to all of this, and the real positive message in this, and get to the point, is the initial estimates in 2018, when we did Measure O, was a total debt service cost of $90 million. Actual debt service costs, it's now being recalculated using the recent bond issuance, is $77 million and change, with the savings to the taxpayers over the life of these bonds of about $12.8 million. So that is the positive message, I'm sorry it took me so long to present this slide, but seeing that the first couple of years is spiky, and I did want to explain why that tax rate's going to $20, and maybe even slightly higher next year, and then it will taper off over time to beat those estimates that we promised the taxpayers. And that is it for my presentation, thank you for your patience.
Thank you. Are there any questions of council? Councilmember Gibbons? Any questions? Hey, are there any members of the public that are wanting to speak on this item? Okay, I'll bring it back to council for discussion and/or a motion.
I just want to say, this is great, we're saving our 12 million, whatever, that's great over the course of this bond, so I'm supporting this.
I also just wanted to celebrate the excellent financial management and being able to take advantage of some great rates at the time, and just kudos to our financing for that and leadership.
Okay, is there a motion? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Gibbons?
Ditto to the previous comments, very good work all around.
And I'm happy to make a motion that the city council adopt a resolution authorizing an ad valorem tax levy based on a debt service estimate to be provided Santa Clara County regarding general obligation bonds for fiscal year 2022 to 23.
Second?
Thank you, we have a motion and a second. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Gibbons?
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Councilwoman Landry?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bybee?
Aye.
Okay, that moves us on to unfinished business, which we have none, and council committee reports, does anyone want to report? No? Councilmember Gibbons, how about you? Okay, and so I'll adjourn the regular city council meeting, and the next regularly scheduled council meeting is for Tuesday, August 2nd. Good night, everybody. Good morning, Councilmember Gibbons.